Okay, the time is 7:42 on the 30th of June. This is the 2014, and this is the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. We've just moved from the second floor to the third floor. And the next item on our agenda is a deliberation and vote on the application of SEB Hingham LLC for a comprehensive permit under Chapter 40b. At our last hearing, we closed the hearing for purposes of accepting further submissions from the applicant or from the public. Prior to closing, we had asked the applicant if there was anything further that they wanted to submit for these proceedings, and they said there was nothing further they wanted to submit. And at their request, we closed the hearing. So our agenda today is to deliberate and decide and vote on their application. Before doing that, Emily and Susan, is there anything we need to correct for the record in terms of making sure that we have properly stated what's been submitted? I'm not aware that there's any correction, but I just want to...
No, because there's, I mean, once you closed the hearing, there were no...
Right, but to the extent that there were administrative errors in terms of what was reported, I just want to make sure that we've got the record correct.
That I'm aware of.
Yeah, I'm not... So with that, what I think we should do is look at the draft conditions for board consideration, which is the large staple document that Town Council and the zoning administrator have so ably put together based on the comments, discussions that this board has had. Go through them, and then after we've settled on how we want those conditions to look, then entertain motions for accepting or not those conditions. So Susan, I think the best way would be if you, as Town Council, could walk us through what we have here.
All right, so kind of in typical or in past CBA 40b structure, you usually have attachments for the conditions, the waivers, and there's also an attachment that describes the submitted plan set. Emily said she had, so on Attachment A is the project plans. There's just no Chelsea here, which will not be in the decision, but just the approved plans will be the project plans as modified by the conditions that you may impose. But Emily was, had some comments on this Attachment A. It may need to be updated.
Just one sheet, Sheet C5 was not included in the April 23rd submittal and was resubmitted on May 7th. So it's, we'll just note in this reference that Sheet C5 has a resubmitted date.
So was there a C4? Because there's no C4 referenced in this list.
I don't think so, because...
There's no C5 reference in this either.
Yeah, there's no C4.
Right, because they didn't include it. But they had, it's the floor plan and elevation plan for Building A. They had the other buildings' floor plans, but they left that one out and so completed the plan set.
So that would be, and Sheet C5 dated, what day?
Well, it's got a resubmitted date of 5/7. They didn't, the actual...
Did it ever have an initial submission date?
It did. It was from 2013. It was June 13th or something of 2013. No revisions to those particular sheets, but they labeled it resubmitted date 5/7.
Okay, because if you look at, it says dated February 22nd, 2013 revised through, and there were a certain sheet list.
Yep.
And then there's going to be a Sheet C5 that was originally dated what? I'm so sorry, I don't have that in front of me. Some date in 2013, and then resubmitted?
Right.
On May something 7th?
7/24.
And what's the date that we closed the hearing?
June 18th.
Okay.
Do we need to specifically exclude what they call, I guess, modification two? That plan set with the three-story building that went away from the townhouse? Do we need to specifically exclude that set?
Those are not included in the list. So what happened is, the February 22nd, 2013, right, was the original set.
Yep.
It got, they were revised a number of times.
Right.
Then there was a whole new plan set.
Right, and that's what Joe's referring to.
Which has been, right.
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn, and then they went back to modifying the original plan set, and that's the revised through April 23rd date. So I think in, because they were withdrawn, we're treating them as non...
Okay, right, but I think, just to follow up on Joe's point, our decision should reflect that we have not evaluated those plans because the applicant withdrew them.
Right, I would think that would be in the procedural discussion section.
Yes, but just making a note that that should be the good point.
Yeah.
That's perfect. Okay, anything else?
That's Attachment A.
Anything else on Attachment A?
Okay, the conditions are broken down into categories, so to try to make some sense. And this is something that Emily and I talked about going forward on all the permits that CBA does, because we found in going back and reviewing older permits, which we've been doing a lot lately, that you have the construction conditions mixed up with the kind of permitting conditions, and so we talked about going forward, trying to...
Categorize them.
Categorize them so that once a project's done, there's like one list, it's at the end, this is really all, everything else is the past. So that's how we structured this. So I don't know, do you want to just start walking through them?
Yeah, I think we should.
Because I don't, you haven't looked at them as a board.
Right.
You had a rough draft of them at the last hearing, but you haven't, so. There's comments that we can talk about, and there's a few that are highlighted, but I think you can just start marching through it.
So starting with general, general conditions, A1.
I think that's fine.
Yeah, I don't think we need to read each of these out loud.
A2, do we have any land court issues here? Is this like...
The only thing I would say is that if you're not going to read them, that you note that this is draft conditions that are dated June 30th that you're reviewing, so that they're incorporated by reference into the record, because if you're not going to read them, we need to...
Right, well, this, I'm assuming this document itself is part of the record, so reading it out loud is not going to...
Right.
No.
Make it more into the record, but...
It's a draft dated June 30th.
Right, yes.
Okay.
So my point on 2, there's no requirement for land court action here in terms of...
So the applicant shall record this decision at the Plymouth County Registry ODs and provide evidence of said recording to the board and the building commissioner prior to application for building permit.
Some parcels you do with the registry, some parcels you have to do with the land court section.
I don't think that it's registered land, do you have?
It's not registered.
I don't have the references.
Do you have the applications?
I know that Linden, no. I know that Linden Ponds actually has both, so...
Okay, we can put our registry district as applicable, so that's no problem.
Yeah, I doubt it, but...
I don't, I don't think it is, but I don't want to...
I don't think it is either, I just want to be sure.
...date that without double checking it.
Yep.
Susan, with respect to condition four, which requires them to copy the board and the building commissioner, is that an issue that HAC is likely to respect, or is that, do they view that as too intrusive?
You don't have any say over it, you just get a copy of it?
Right, I understand, but it's just sort of...
They, I didn't, I don't think so, okay? I've never seen it raised.
Okay, okay.
But also, for, in advance of the last hearing, SEB had a draft of these, and so, and they commented it on any ones that they had a concern about, and they did not comment on these. So what I am going to do, some of them you'll see are even highlighted as we go through, but I can reference for you any of the ones that SEB commented on.
So actually, that's very helpful. So through A1 through 5, are there any that SEB had an issue with?
Let me get there. I did a comparison today, so everything they commented on would call out, shows SEB changes. They called a typo on Catchment A, then on what we, at the A1, they added, they asked that the phrase "subject to the provisions of 760 CMR" be added, and we added it.
Okay.
Then they don't have another comment until B1.
Okay, so I've got nothing else on A.
Nope, neither do I.
Okay, let's go to D.
So in B1, what they added...
And just for the public's edification, even though they can't respond, we're now talking about pre-construction conditions.
So what they added was from, let me find where it started, okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, from the fifth line down, such drawings. So this talks about the project plans, which were described in A, are, must be modified as follows, and there is, then you have a list of all the ways they must be modified before they can be the final approved plans. So they added from such drawings and calculations through deemed approved.
Okay, so such drawings and calculations shall be reviewed administratively, meaning and intending that there should not be a public hearing in which the board reviews and discusses them, but rather the board may do so at a public meeting.
Right, and if you keep going all the way to the end of that paragraph, which goes over to the next page, that's everything they added.
Yep.
So 30-day constructive review.
If they're happy with that language, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, Emily and I looked at it, Emily didn't think it was problematic, so...
I'm okay with that, 30 days, yeah.
Okay.
Anything on B2 that they had an issue with?
No, there's no comment from them until we get to E.
Okay. Utility plans...
The comments will come out, obviously, in the final.
Right. So with respect to E1, have they objected to that?
So E1, they did not comment on. So, and that was a comment, I think Emily inserted, that the tree planting requirement was modeled, right? That was, so in 2, this is one where I think it's worthwhile for you to pull out the plan set. We talked about this very briefly at the end of the last hearing before we closed it.
Before we get to E2, I'm going to stay on E1 for a minute, which says materials, lists specifying plant size and species, including a minimum of one tree per building on each side of the access drive. Tree shall be not less than 12 feet in height and of a species approved by the town tree warden. So they're not asking us to act as the tree warden in this situation, they're willing to work with the tree warden directly here?
They did not comment on this condition.
Okay, so, just noting that, okay, now we can move on.
Okay, so 2, Emily, so most of these, Emily had either taken from prior decisions or just from going through all of the project submissions, and then I tweaked, commented, whatever asked question. So this, we touched on briefly at the end of last hearing, where we were talking about, do you have everything in the record you need? There had not been any sort of detailed discussion about the boundary lines, buffer zone, right?
Yeah, I asked the question, right.
So, you know, I had asked, do you have, you said you would look at the project plans to determine if you thought there was any screening, if it was sufficient, if you thought it should be augmented, if their fences would be appropriate. So this was just suggested language. Now you see, they do have comments in here.
Yep.
That the fence had never been discussed, they thought it was unnecessary, there's plenty of plantings already out there, so...
Well, but this is, in fact, the reason why we asked them, that they wanted to keep the hearing open, so they could respond and address the concerns as we were going forward, and they declined to do that.
Right, well, this is, this is the extent of their comment, is comment A4.
Yeah.
They, in fact, when they sent us back their markup, they deleted everything I have highlighted in yellow.
Yep.
That was there. They do not believe that a fence is necessary. They did not object to the buffer area.
The planted area, right.
The planted area.
So what's the reason that we think we need a fence?
It was just, so they don't, they didn't provide a landscape plan.
Right.
So you can't see what screening, if any, would be provided on the site. If the board feels that planting could accomplish some type of screening for adjacent neighbors, that, I think that would be fine.
I'm thinking something along the lines of what we have, as you enter into Bearcove Park off the Beale Street entrance and along the development, there's a nice mix of evergreen trees, various species that are really, really dense and really, really screened.
Yeah, most recently, I'll plant, I mean, I only have this plan right here right now, but, I mean, this appears to be a treat area, but then this is where it gets closest to.
Right, correct.
So if you want to do, you know, a specific area or...
Some of this was modeled on, like, the multi-family requirements would require, what, a 50-foot setback, and so they're proposing something consistent with residence B for single-family developments, it's just 20 feet from property line. So they're closer than it would be for this type of use, if this use were allowed in the district.
Yeah, I mean, I actually, I actually think, you know, a solid six-foot-high fence might not be required. I mean, we talk about a minimum 15-foot buffer area planted with a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees and shrubs to present a reasonably opaque natural barrier to a height of 10 feet. I mean, suppose we just had the condition read to present an opaque natural barrier. You don't need, I mean, it seems like a little bit belt and suspenders to me, and so I have some sympathy that we don't need 1,000 feet of fence, and fences require maintenance and, you know, so maybe, maybe if we could do it more naturally, the way the site currently exists, and it sounds like we're trying to get there anyway, that maybe it would be less expend, more economical and more attractive if it was, we just had a planted kind of opaque barrier.
Right.
So just a thought, but the fence, the fence is something that, you're right, we didn't really speak about, or they're right, we didn't really speak about at the, in the public hearing, but by the same token, they didn't give us a landscape plan, which is why we didn't speak about a lot of this stuff, because we couldn't...
Well, everything that's in here is obviously just proposals from staff with mind...
Right, right.
You know, playing with language, so it's, as between the three board members, whatever you feel is appropriate, that's...
Right, but just so I'm clear, they are aware in the public record that we, that the fence was a possibility, because they received the proposal and they gave a comment to it.
Yes.
So it's not as if this is, this is out of the blue.
Right.
And you're right, they elected not to present any sort of buffer plan. I guess my sense is that a six-foot-high fence might not be in keeping with the neighborhood.
Right, yeah.
So I would be inclined to do the planted buffer.
Yes.
Is there...
We could, we could tighten it up a little and say to present an opaque natural barrier, not reasonably opaque, but opaque.
Yeah.
I mean, because the fence would be an opaque barrier, right?
Right.
So if we say we don't need the fence, what we need is, we need more planting so that you, that we achieve that screening.
What we're talking about is just screening. The setback is what the setback is, we're talking about effective screening.
Right. And, and so I think if we could maybe tweak the language here, and if we don't need the fence, remove reference to the fence, but get language that gets us what we want, which is effective screening.
Yeah. I'd be comfortable with that. Joe?
As would I, yeah. And I think Todd's suggesting us to say "and opaque" rather than a reasonably opaque is a way to do that.
So I think we're removing the fence.
Right.
Okay.
So the highlighted text?
Yeah. Okay.
Their next comment was on G1.
G1, internal roadway design shall conform to the requirements of a minor residential street specified in the Town of Hingham rules and regs, adopted under subdivision control and engineering best practices as recommended by the board's peer review engineer as follows. And their comment was...
It, we didn't really understand it, so let me just show you, it's, it's what's in blue, and so we, because we didn't think it was clear or easily, easily to discern what they were going for, we were not going to include it. Because it seems to that it's referencing the sub 1 through 4 below, but then it says "and" the requirements below, like, it didn't, it was unclear.
Yeah, this is...
So we just...
That's not helpful.
No, it was, we did not include it.
Right.
Does that get to the width of the roadway, the standards? Is that what that is? Or is that included in those standards?
It would be, except for it's not called out here, so...
The reason I ask is they're proposing a 20-foot wide width.
Right, and so...
I would think that a subdivision standard roadway would be 24.
You're correct.
For a minor residential?
For my, I believe so, although I apologize, I don't have, well, no, I don't have...
Two-way traffic, I believe, would be 24.
What this was intended to do is to say where items 1 through 4 came from, not to require that they conform to all other standards for minor streets...
Right.
Right.
In subdivision regs, if that makes sense.
Shall conform to the requirements as follows.
Yes, just so limited to, or, you know, maybe we could clarify that if...
So what you're saying is, design shall conform to the requirements of, shall conform to the following requirements...
Yeah, I think that's better than "as" followed.
Yeah, I would say, design shall conform to the following requirements, and we can note that these requirements, we have derived from the subdivision control.
Okay.
But they're, we're not requiring compliance with that. And we're talking about profile grade, 24-inch clean gravel foundation, roadway pavement material, and the 3-inch binder course. And how does this contrast with what they're, they proposed, or have they not given us sufficient detail?
I think they proposed a 2-1/2-inch binder course. I don't believe they had specified that, noted on the plans that it would conform to Mast DOT, dense binder. They did not have that, I think they had half, but I apologize, I don't have the exact numbers. So they weren't there on these particular things that John Chesia felt were important.
Okay.
So he issued you a memo January 21st to say, here's the items where they deviate from subdivision regs, and these would be important for, you know, long-term care and durability of the roadway.
And they did not object to any 1 through 4.
Good, so I'm fine with that.
Their next comment doesn't come until you get to I.
So let's go through, finish G.
So they didn't say anything about G4, 4-foot-wide shoulder? Because that's not what these plans show. You got 20-foot of pavement, you got a sidewalk on the north side, essentially, and looks like a curve on the south side.
Are you on G4?
Yeah, on G4.
Yeah, provision of 4-foot-wide shoulder along the side of the access drive without a sidewalk.
Which would be the south side. I mean, I think it's a great idea, because we do need some snow storage.
Right.
They got to have someplace to plow the snow.
So show me where.
It would be, it would be along this side.
Yep.
But not the driveways, so obviously...
Right, right.
I mean, probably from here down through here, and then...
So did their plans otherwise provide for sufficient snow storage? Because I don't believe it did.
Their plans did not designate snow storage, which is why John Chesia...
Right, so I think in the absence of them providing any sort of reasonable proposal, John Chesia's recommendation, to me, makes sense.
Makes sense.
And again, they did not object to it.
Okay, right, okay. Then we're up to H, stormwater.
H1 is fine, they're going to have to do that anyway for the conservation commission. How about instead of saying the EPA Stormwater Management Regulations, we say the Stormwater Management Performance Standards? Is there included in several sets of regulations?
Right, for H2.
For H2?
You with us, Emily?
Set of regulations say performance standards?
Yes.
Because they are in the wetlands regulations, chapter 91, and the water quality certification, I mean, they're in several.
Right, and I think the comment from John Chesia here is that these standards were proposed as appropriate and necessary for the fight, for the site, and they are consistent with the subdivision regs, but that's not why we're imposing them. I have nothing more on this page. Just for you folks to know, there are a total of 11 pages, and we're now on page 4. You're not supposed to, we're not handing anything out to the public, we're not allowed to hand anything out to public, but just for those who are following along.
Let me see how this is worded. You know what, Emily, I think what's missing here, let me see if the lead-in still works. So the lead-in to this is...
Where are you, Susan?
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm backing up for a second. So the lead-in sentence to all these sub, these lettered conditions are, "The final plans and construction drawings shall include the following modifications." I'm just making sure that it reads.
Right.
So it shall include a SWIP plan consistent with NPDES for review. I think it's just awkward. It should say something which, for review, shall be submitted to the town for review? I mean, I think we're missing some words there. Because if you read it with the lead-in from page B2...
Yeah, I'm there.
So it says, "The final plan shall include modification, the following modifications to the project plans, SWIP consistent with NPDS for review." But I think we should say, "for submittal to," to who for review? I mean, I think that might just be a little unclear now I'm reading it really...
It's interesting, who, who in the town really reviews these things? Because these are prepared and submitted to EPA.
I know that in connection with the...
As part of the construction stormwater permit.
...field project, but it was requested that that get to the review engineer a sufficient time in advance of construction.
Right.
So I think it's been the review engineer who's received them in the past.
Right, but what we're saying is the plans will not be consistent with or authorized by this special permit unless they meet the following criteria.
Comprehensive permit, right.
The comprehensive permit.
Yeah.
We're not looking to have them come back to this board.
No.
Right.
No, and in fact, that, remember, they added in the language with the 30-day review.
Yes.
So, but I think, I just think we're missing a couple of words for it to make sense, so submitted, you know, to the review engineer, to the board, to the building commissioner, I don't know who, Emily, you feel internally, it should be submitted.
But that lead-in sentence does say that prior to the issuance of a building permit, I mean, maybe we can take out everything after the Niptys.
Yeah, that's true, because it's repetitive, okay.
And confusing, because it's...
Except it has one month, the at least one-month length.
That's actually, it's consistent with the lead-in.
Yeah, because it's 30 days. Okay, so I think if we stop at NPDES, it makes sense.
Do you want to just say, "The construction stormwater general permit requirements, NPDES, construction stormwater general permit."
Okay, whichever lang, whatever language you feel is appropriate.
Because that's what it's prepared under.
Can you say that, say that again, Joe?
The construction stormwater general permit. If we want to get real specific, we say the Massachusetts Construction Stormwater General Permit, or one of four states that doesn't issue those permits.
Construction, stormwater...
General permit.
Instead of SWIP?
No, after SWIP.
After SWIP.
No, sorry. I would put it after NPDES in, you know, the closed parentheses there.
But getting back to page B2, are you, where are you on that?
Oh, no, we're good.
Okay.
I was just trying to...
I think, I think we're fine.
Read, read it all together. Can, Joe, can you read the entire thing as you are requesting that it read? Because I'm just trying to follow where you inserted that.
For Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, SWIP, consistent with National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, even though we, I don't know if we need that.
Yep, we probably don't.
Construction stormwater general permit.
Oh, okay, just a lot of words, okay.
And then for review, are we taking out the review or leaving it?
Yes, we're taking out from for review to the end.
Okay.
Good.
Good. And then we're up to 4, storm sewer sizing, consistent with mass DOT design guidelines. I'm up to I, anything?
Right, so, an I, um...
Which is wastewater treatment.
Okay, so, in I, there was... There was some generic language that had been put in about monitoring. Then there was the, all the back and forth about the monitoring. They had suggested, just a one-sentence, "Applicant agrees to install not more than five wells on his property at locations mutually agreeable with the Board of Health and applicant." But then, subsequent to that, there was the whole discussion, and John proposed this more detailed language that's in here as I2. So, they did comment, but it was more generic language. But they had actually included a comment that said, "Our understanding was that John Chesia was going to come up with some performance standards." So, after all the back and forth, what John submitted at the last hearing was this language that is in I2.
Okay.
So, up to 5, groundwater monitoring wells installed in accordance with DEP standards shall be installed to confirm wastewater leaching system loading in the aquifer.
One more, S.A.S.
S.A.S. has to be spelled out.
Yep. Do you know what that is?
Nope.
What is this?
We'll get it spelled out.
I don't know what it is.
Nope.
I'm gonna ask Siri.
There was some other acronyms that I caught, but I did not catch that one.
Do we want to break out the last sentence and put them somewhere else, since they're not really tied to final plans but ongoing, or...
There's a, there's something, there's another condition that's related to resource areas that we have a similar question. So, okay, so this is where the whole idea of breaking out the construction stuff from the ongoing stuff falls apart a little bit. Because this is an ongoing, or at least a post-construction requirement, that they're going to be sampled this many times. I guess we can talk about how you want to structure that. I mean, if the language works for you, where, how we number it may not be super relevant.
I mean, I think it's, it's relevant here in terms of the wastewater treatment. Do we need to be specific in terms of who is doing the monitoring?
Right, so it doesn't state who's doing the monitoring and who, where, who, to whom they would submit those...
Right.
Yes, so that does need to be addressed. But I, I mean, I believe the, well, what is your intent as to who monitors?
So, for, with respect to the wastewater treatment, do we want the report to go to the...
Board of Health.
Board of Health, or I, I'm wondering if it should go to the Building Commissioner and let him determine whether it's going to Board of Health, Conservation. I would prefer that they have one place that they're shooting all their information to, and that, I think, which would be the Building Commissioner.
Okay, so, applicant is monitoring and submitting reports to Building Commissioner? Because it's not saying who's monitoring.
Right.
But it says who's responsible for the modifications back at the lead-in sentence, right? The applicant shall submit to the board. Or technical review by the board or its representative. So, I guess if this is going to be different, then we should say it in...
Where were you reading?
So, now we're back on B2.
B1. B1. The modifica, this is all under...
So, B1?
Yeah.
Or is it the applicant should submit to the board?
So, that means... So, this is where I think it makes sense to break this, the, the monitoring away from the placement of the wells in the plan. Right, they're two kind of separate things, so, I mean, the language is okay, right? And then we could fit it in where it belongs, either as we go on or after.
I think the question we have to, we have to agree, who is responsible for doing the monitoring and where the test results get delivered?
Yep.
Okay, so let's, just backing up for a second. So, under, what is B1, which is modifications they have to make to the plans, these are all things they have to do before they can get a building permit. So, it's really before the role of the Building Commissioner kicks in, because he's not going to issue anything until he knows they've complied with this. So, at this point, it had been set up to be the review engineer. It says board or its representative, but it's going to be the engineer, the review engineer.
I would feel more comfortable that we say it's the review engineer and not the board, because I do not want to give the impression that we are forcing the applicant, applicant to come back to the board.
Yeah.
This is intended to be a one-stop, and they don't come back to us.
Okay. So, when we're back, so let's go back to B1 for a second.
The board or its representative.
Well, it says the board or its representative, so it's going to be prepared for technical review by the board's peer review engineer. See, because then, all the language they add about how you're going to review them at a hearing and everything comes out.
Right, I agree.
Okay, so, you don't need the language about it being at a public meeting. Then it's the, and the review engineer is providing written comments. So, but I think it shall be submitted... Who is it getting submitted to, though? It should be submitted to zoning administrator?
Yes.
Or reviewed by the peer review engineer?
Yes.
So, that, Emily makes sure she's getting a copy.
Right.
So, to the zoning administrator for technical review by the board's peer review...
Right.
To make sure that they've done everything they're supposed to do. And then the review engineer shall provide written comments to the applicant requesting revisions or to approve the drawings within 30 days, otherwise deemed approved. So, this way, Emily, since they'll come into her, can monitor the timeframes. Does that work for you?
Yeah, and then if the technical engineer does not approve of something, then they can come back.
Well, then the applicant can exercise their rights to come in front of the board for modification.
Right, right, but the permits will not issue if, in fact, what they submit is not consistent with this document.
Right.
Right, and that's fine.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so that, that actually is a cleaner way to go about it.
Go back to I2.
Okay, so now we're back in I2.
S.A.S., surficial aquifer system.
Say that again.
Surficial aquifer system.
Surficial.
Yes.
Aquifer.
S-U-R-F-I-C-I-A-L.
I knew that.
Either that, or it's Scandinavian era.
System, surficial aquifer system. I don't think I've ever seen that acronym before. Okay, so, they have to install the, okay, so the plans need to show five groundwater mining wells.
But everything up to, "A minimum of two wells shall be installed as near the property line as practical," makes sense in this section. And then, I think we need to move that last sentence somewhere else, and the board needs to decide who's responsible for the monitoring and who's responsible for reviewing the result.
Okay, so we have, I think it should be, we could break that up. So, "A minimum of two wells shall..." Okay, wait a minute, I think it should be prior to construction. So, we're again, prior to a building permit, but it already says that in the intro paragraph.
Right, that's correct.
So, I think all we need to do is get to the sampling. So, if it's going to get moved, then maybe it's, gets put, conditions in effect during constru... When are they, okay, during construction.
During construction, if you're right.
But they're saying they should be sampled in the summer before they start construction. So, that's why this is a pre-construction condition, because you want them... All right, so that would go down in 3, that would be on B6, pre-construction conditions.
So, this is to get the baseline?
This is to get the baseline.
Get the baseline, right.
So, what's interesting is, where is there, well, let's do, the first thing is, that last sentence about the sampling needs to get moved to Section 3. And then it needs to reference back to I2.
Yes.
All right.
So, we're making our new 3E. What do you think?
3E, or...
I'm paid to be 7.
Yeah, I'm not there yet. Simplify adding it, or maybe it doesn't, maybe it's out of order, but anyway.
I don't, okay, so that would be insert from 2... Yes, 1, 2, to I. We get a little crazy with these counts. It's B1, I2. However, as now that we're talking about this, because these kind of just got put in based on the last hearings, so we, this first time, the conditions are being reviewed. Where's the monitoring, is there a monitoring condition later on for, after there, like, after post-construction? Because I don't see one on page B10, post-construction and ongoing conditions.
And when I read this, I did not read it as limited to pre-construction.
There was, uh... Thereafter maintenance, resource area protection.
I mean, I don't, I kind of remember this as, this, he's saying you should do it in the summer when there's been minimal rain and to get a baseline.
Right, but then it was...
But if we start, if we read 2 from the, from the beginning, it says, "Up to five wells will be installed to, you know, to confirm wastewater leaching system loading in the aquifer." Talk about where the locations will be, one up gradient, blah, blah, blah. Two wells will be installed down gradient, but it doesn't, these are monitoring wells. It, it says that the wells will have to be put in prior to construction, but I agree with Joe. It doesn't give any indication that they won't be continuously monitored.
And I thought that was the discussion. In fact, it would be to give us the early warning sign if there was a problem with wastewater treatment.
Right, but what is continuously? Does that mean every three months, every six months, once a year?
I don't know what, I don't know what the standard is.
Okay, is it possible to get John?
We can try to grab John.
He's downstairs at the hearing right now.
We should.
Whatever best practices are, is what we should hold them to.
The other place that we can look is the, okay.
I'll tell you, peek at this if you want to see it, you guys, a minute.
Okay.
Do you want to come back to it, or do you want to?
I, as far as I can, I, I think it should be monitored on a regular basis, consistent with best practices as recommended by the town engineer, or I don't know.
But let's think about this contextually. We're going to have a homeowners association. There's a later condition that the conditions of this permit be incorporated into the homeowners association.
Right.
To just have it reasonable as the town engineer might...
Right.
I agree with you, specificity is better, I agree.
I think you need to say they need to be monitored once a year, twice a year, whatever.
I thought we had a discussion about that.
I, I, it's, I think we did too. I don't think that it got reflected in what John drafted.
Okay, so, let's keep going, and when we can get to that.
Oh, wait, here it is. In the, in the Board of Health memo dated June 18th, they have, um, "The ZBA understands the difference between a treatment plan's operator's responsibility for monitoring effluent exiting the plant," which is what they said is required under Title V, "and the required test well monitoring of groundwater."
Right.
Okay, "As an aside, the standard protocol for installing groundwater monitoring wells is identified in our supplementary, supplementary regs at Section 7C. The frequency of testing groundwater quarterly after three years in perpetuity seems unreasonably rigid. The Board of Health suggests the frequency should be more flexible to allow the Board of Health to, the ability to amend the testing frequency based on actual results." So, they are asking you to be loose about it.
Well, but that, that has merit, because I, it would seem to me that you have tests, I'll arbitrarily pick a number, twice a year. And then, if those results are fine, there's no reason to have increased tests. If it turns out they're showing spikes or a problem, then you do more testing, but there's no reason...
Maybe you go to quarterly.
Well, we don't want to require the, the more frequent testing unless...
Right.
The less frequent tests create a problem, so...
I just want to say, I'd be comfortable saying no more than twice a year unless they're determined to be elevated concentrations of...
Yeah.
Or testing for nitrogen, John? When we're testing the monitoring wells, we're testing for nitrogen, nitrates? Yes, total pedal nitrogen, I mean, what, what are we?
This is for the wastewater treatment, monitoring wells.
Right, okay, so...
Before you go on, Susan, so, do we have any issue with John, with, with the hearing closed?
No, he's, he's representing the board, and he's just explaining his condition.
Right, okay.
His suggested language.
Yeah, we're talking about the monitoring.
Yeah, and I'm trying to remember if I wrote it somewhere.
I have your, I have the language you prepared, which is the middle one. We have what you drafted, we have the memo from the Board of Health. There was a discussion of testing quarterly after three years in perpetuity, which even the Board of Health is saying seems too rigid.
Well, okay, so let me just explain a little bit about the whole memo and whatever. So, to start with, the monitoring wells, what I had is doing some pre-construction testing, and that gives you background data, and that you would test for the nitrogen. So, then you'd know that you have whatever's in the ground today before they build anything. Now, you have a background. After they build it, for a treatment system as proposed, I believe Title V requires quarterly testing for perpetuity regardless.
Okay.
Now, that's for the system itself. Now, the question is, how long do you want to do the wells? I think that's something that you kind of, would be best to let them go for... How, for, I'm going to say forever, until there's reason for someone to come back and say, "Look, it's been steady for the last, you know, five years, eight, whatever you think." Come back and say, "We don't want to test them anymore, is that okay?" And then you could say, "Sure."
That's counterintuitive to me. It would seem to me that it's likely to be okay for a period of time, and then there'll be a problem. So, I don't want it to be that period of time elapsed, test stopped, and then all of a sudden, we're hit.
Systems fail after 20 years, and all of a sudden, that's when we don't want to have less frequent testing. And the other thing is, is that in a place like this where there's pretty good porous soils, stuff can pass through fairly quickly. So, you're testing it four times a year, you could, I mean, something theoretically, you test it, something happens, big fertilizer, whatever. Something gets in the wells that's not supposed to be there, and then it's passed through before the next test. But I think the reason I said for four was because that's consistent when they're out there testing the plant itself, go sample the wells. And it just, somebody's already there, they know how to do that stuff, just let them do it at the same time.
Right.
It, it's a cost for the analysis, which for nitrates and nitrogen isn't a huge number. Bringing stuff to be...
So, are you proposing quarterly?
Yeah.
Or, I think at the same time, they're required to do testing under Title V for the system. If you just put it on that, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, because the same...
So, just simultaneously...
Same guy.
Working temporarily with testing required for the septic system under Title V.
Right.
That actually makes sense, because they have somebody out there testing anyway.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, it's the same, same person does the same test. I used to actually have a group that did wastewater treatment plants, and that's what you do. You take, sample the plant, you sample the wells.
Right.
That's what, you know, the whole, it's all the same thing, it goes to the same lab.
Right, so I think we should actually note for the record that we're structuring this so that the costs, so that, so we're doing what we can to minimize the marginal cost of doing this additional work.
Right.
Which is basically to piggyback it at the time and with the same people as other tests that Title V would otherwise require.
And John, S.A.S., surficial aquifer system?
That is a soil absorption system.
Soil absorption.
That's the... That's the Title 5 nomenclature now. It used to be leaching field or leaching wood, now it's.
I'm glad we didn't go with your Google.
It's a lot different now.
Soil absorption system.
Zorb or sorp?
With a P.
Absorption, A-B-S.
O-R-P. Right? Zorb?
Yes.
Absorption.
You let me down.
Actually, if you look at the paragraph above, I actually did spell it out.
60 bucks a month for what?
Oh, you did?
Yes. Look at the.
It must be in another place.
Hard to believe.
John, can I have that back for a second, just because it's my own copy? I just want to, okay.
I probably have it in here too, I just haven't.
Okay. Oh, yeah, there it is.
Yes, I agree.
Did this get put in anywhere? Oh, then the sampling's down here. Okay.
Sorry.
How did I, they got lost somehow. It might have been my fault.
Still on page 4.
Okay. There's, there's the list, three suggesting conditions. These were actually submitted at the last hearing. In all of the redrafting, this one in the middle got picked up in the draft in front of you, but, so this is where the confusion about when it should be, came up, because unfortunately, I think between all the drafts that went back and forth, it got dropped. So it was in John's recommendations originally. And he actually says what you should be testing for, so we should incorporate this in.
Incorporate that.
Yeah. All right. Sorry, we dragged you up here.
That's okay. Is that all, or, I mean, I can probably, I think they're pretty much wrapping up down there, so I can stay.
We are more fun than they are down there, so you should stay here.
It's cooler here.
Okay, yes. Okay, so let's move.
Fun to stay.
I can hang out if you have other questions.
So can we go on to I-3?
No.
No?
Can we hold on for a second? So, just so, in here, sorry. Of course we can, because you're the chair, so anything you want to do, we can do. I apologize. So the, the sampling is going to be tied to, but we're going to move all that, the frequency, I just want to confirm, is getting moved to that Section 3 that talks about post-construction?
Yes.
Okay. The, this language that says.
Wait, 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 there's, there's the monitoring pre-construction, there was monitoring during construction, and there's post-construction.
Okay, so this, in Section 3.
Yes.
Is where the sampling, the pre-construction. And then in Section E, which is on page B10, there will be the ongoing monitoring.
Yep.
Which will again relate back to I-2.
But the B10 is post-construction. I don't want this, there will not be a lapse of monitoring during construction.
Well, except for that, so the, the pre-construction is to get the baseline.
Right.
During construction, the system's not active.
Right.
So we don't need during construction as much as we need post-construction, once the system's been.
The nitrates is coming from the wastewater.
There's not construction activity that will generate it?
No. Generally not, but what, what the goal would be is to install the wells at locations so they would not be disturbed by construction.
Right.
And then they would sample them, but I would expect that some of those samples might be taken after, say, some trees may have been cut or whatever, but no real, you know, big earthwork alteration.
Okay.
Yeah, I think once you have, I mean, I don't know that you need to keep, it's, once the thing starts running, and then you probably want to start it. I mean, it's.
But, but you made a great point. We should make sure that we have a condition that the construction does not disturb the monitoring wells. It's obvious to you, but.
Yeah, you're right. No, I.
I need to make that clear.
All right, that, that's going to go under C, conditions in effect during construction, not affect.
Monitoring wells.
You know what? So I guess the question becomes. And then we can break it up between the pre-construction, construction. So we have, we now have one that's in the plans, have to show the wells.
Right.
Then pre-construction, you have to do this, during construction, you have to do that, post-construction. Okay. And they'll be spread out, and we'll just have to cross-reference them.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. The depth, okay, and then he, John, recommends what shall be recorded and what type of samples, the protocols, and what shall, the sample shall be analyzed for nitrate, nitrogen, total nitrogen, and the exceedance level. So that would all get incorporated in the monitoring.
The report.
Right, and in the condition.
Yes.
Okay.
John, do you have an expectation as to who would be receiving the report for the town?
I would think that the Board of Health would get the report, because they're the ones that get all the other reports.
We do not want to be in a position of requiring a 40B applicant to be reporting to a local board other than this board, and preferably only reporting to administrative personnel.
Right.
Like the building commissioners?
You could do that, and, I mean.
I mean, we could certainly tap to the expertise of your boards to review it, but in terms of who would be receiving it.
Yeah, you could have it sent to the building department, and then they could forward it along for people to look at.
That's what we need to do.
I mean, it's, usually when you get those reports, there's like a little thing, in that report, you might want it to include, you've got to write a condition, you should have the report include not just the well, but the treatment system results. And when you get those reports, if they don't comply, it generally says right on it, they were out of compliance, and here's what we're going to do. But you might want to incorporate that into a condition that says if it does not comply, the report should include remedial measures.
Post-mediation.
To correct the problems.
Who would prepare the report?
A wastewater system operator.
Is there a state designation, someone would?
Yes. Yeah, they have a license and, without having the thing designed and knowing specifically what, what it is, the grade of that operator isn't necessarily specified, but it's a pretty, for something like these, it's a pretty low, like, it's not a high test number. It's a low, you know, they couldn't, they don't necessarily have to have the ability to run a big treatment plant.
Okay.
They, but they need to go through certain certifications and testings and keep a license active.
And there are state standards for that?
Yep.
Good.
Got the name of the, the kind of person, the title?
What you could say, I mean, maybe what you could say is that a, you know, a person licensed in the Commonwealth of Mass for operation of the specific.
Licensed for operation of the type of facility being proposed by the applicant.
Right, which, we don't know what it is yet and what that license would say yet, so you might, so you could link it back to that. And, you know, sometimes they, from treatment plant, and this is a mini-treatment plant, there's, they have to have a contract with all, I mean, if you want to help, you know, they have, they should have a contract with an operator, and if they change operators, they might want to inform the building department or whatever too, so that they don't have a lapse.
Yeah, no, that's, that absolutely belongs in our requirement.
Yeah. So that's usually what they have, is a contract. You renew them, you know, usually you get like a one-year contract and you renew it. And if this, and they do bid it out and shop it to get the cheapest person.
A contract for the operator of the system, is that something that the Board of Health could reasonably require as part of their Title 5 review?
Those are the reasons we need to add that?
Yeah. I think we should, that should be the Title 5 obligation.
Okay.
Okay. All right. I apologize, so, yeah, I just wanted, I wanted to make sure before we left it, that we got all of that in there.
We're on I-3.
So the reason why this is still in italics is.
This is to minimize the impact of this residential development to the water supplies that following our recommended conditions.
Right. So John provided a memo, it's good to hear here, on May 7th. And the, these were just cut and paste, copied and past, verbatim. They're not, they were, so we have them in the record because they were submitted on his May 7th memo. I guess the question is, how do they need to be tweaked to work as specific conditions? And some of them may not even belong here, because these are all how you're going to modify the plans. Some of them may be ongoing, you know, you know, occupant, post-construction type conditions that would go at the end.
Right.
But they're, they're also, they're recommended, which means the applicant doesn't have to follow them. That's the way they're written.
Well, this is why it says wording here will need to be edited if included.
Okay.
So they were not, that's why they're in italics. They're for the board to review and consider whether or not you want them to be, John's recommending them as the peer review engineer, recommending that these types of, they're not recommended that they do it, this is a peer review engineer recommending, that's why I'm saying.
They be included.
This is his language verbatim from his memo. That's why it's in italics.
That wasn't clear to me.
Okay, sorry. And so the question becomes, do you feel that any of John's recommendations should be incorporated as conditions? If so, which ones, where in the decision do you wish to include them?
So the first, it says.
This is probably the proper place to put it, because these would all have an adverse effect on the operation of the system.
But this section that you're in right now is how they're modifying, no, you're still in I.
Right.
Right? This is still how the plans are being modified before they can get a building permit.
Right.
So if these are going to be limit or prohibit pesticides, then that's likely going to be in, yep, in, on B10 and E, post-construction and ongoing conditions.
I agree with that.
But we'd have to be clearer than saying limit or prohibit application pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers. Does the decision about limiting pesticides depend upon the type of sewage disposal system that they ultimately select?
No, the pesticide and fertilizer thing was more related to just a general, because you're in a watershed. It wasn't, and it, they're not necessarily related at all. I mean, they are related if you put a lot of nitrogen fertilizer on, that's going to bump up your nitrogen.
Right.
But fertilizers and pesticides are just good not to have heavy application in those zones too.
Oh, right, but this is under the wastewater treatment plant, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Oh, I don't, yeah, I don't.
No, okay, so it may not, it may, no, so, yeah, it may not have been the best placement. His memo dated May 7th, which is in the record.
Yep.
Talks about, this memo regards issues associated with work in the Zone 2 of Aquarian Water Supply Wells. And then he talks briefly about the connection of the wells and the flowing mill pumping station, the intent of DEP regs and model bylaws is to reduce contamination of the water supply. And then potential contaminants from residential uses include nitrogen loading from wastewater disposal, and fertilizer use, disposal of hazardous materials into the wastewater system, fuel or oil spills, pet waste, et cetera. And then what you see is what got copied in here to minimize the impact of this residential development to the water supplies, the following are recommended conditions.
Right.
Okay, so that was the context.
Okay, so we just need to move it out of the wastewater treatment section?
Yep. And they are all post-construction, ongoing conditions, so 3 would probably be moved.
Yes, the whole thing.
The whole thing to.
E?
E.
Probably an E-6, because we got 5 for monitoring.
Yep.
What does 3 mean? Include a condition that no automobile or power equipment be maintained on site. No cars are allowed at the project?
No, you don't want somebody changing their oil.
Changing the oil and stuff in the driveway.
I mean, it's one thing to wash and wax it, maybe, although I don't even know, you know, what, what they use for chemicals there, but you don't want people changing oil and antifreeze and dumping it on the ground, running it into the thing. I wouldn't be surprised if they would make that a condition anyway, because they don't usually want people fixing cars and these things.
These were in, so, as I've been noting as we go along, everything that you see in here, with a few exceptions, which I'll point out when we get to them, were in the draft that the applicant saw, and they did not object to them.
Right. So I, I would just change maintained to something like shall not be serviced or repaired. Maintain has a different connotation.
Yeah, be serviced.
Right, yeah.
Well, I take that back. One, they did not comment on, and two, their comment was per Title 5 requirements, administer monitoring requirements. I think the monitoring's already going to get covered. We've already covered the groundwater monitoring, and Title 5 is going to have the monitoring of the system.
Right.
So 2 may not be necessary here.
Sounds redundant.
Yep.
I would take that out.
Right.
They didn't, did not comment on, they only commented on 2, they did not comment on any of the others.
So on 3, change maintain to.
Service.
Serviced or repaired.
Did, not, but something like that, should you, would it make sense to specifically say changing fluids of?
Well, you actually have it, this would minimize the potential for motor oil to be improperly disposed, and that's.
That's really like, that and, you know, whatever fluids is really the thing. I mean, vacuuming your interior of your car is fine, it's, it's the other stuff.
So, shall not be serviced on site, so as to.
Limit potential.
Create the potential for leakage of.
Fluids or.
Of, of fluids, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, 1, what did you want to do with the wording on 1?
Limit or prohibit application pesticides, herbicides, and fertilizers. How do we cross the line between limit or prohibit? What, what makes that?
Generally, the conditions I see usually come from conservation, and they'll say you have to use, or, you know, organic materials.
Yeah, they're going to need more of a condition.
But this is, I don't see, I'm not sure they're going to.
They'll have a maintenance company, but the maintenance companies, you know, want to make it look good, so they may tend to fertilize and spray everything, I mean, who knows? So you want to kind of make sure they don't. How you do that, I'm not.
So what's the standard that we apply on?
Standard generally is, like, herbicides, they probably shouldn't be using. You know, hire somebody to pull it up if that's the deal. And then.
Okay, so no herbicide.
Nitrogen or those fertilizers, then you can put it, you know, if you put in like organic fertilizers are okay, then they, that kind of keeps the heavy-duty stuff out.
So it would be prohibit pesticides and herbicides and.
Allow.
Allow organic fertilizers?
Organic fertilizers only.
Okay.
That's good.
3 we covered.
Yep.
Do you want to have just reference the, if we just reference the state law, like that that needs to be followed even though it's on the private property, it's not on the public, I mean, isn't there the?
Yeah, this is just, I mean, this was a suggestion. I mean, you don't want people just having, everybody having like several dogs, and they're all just out in the back going wherever. They could write it into their.
But what's the it that they're writing in? That's what I'm not clear.
Properly dispose of pet waste.
But is that, so to the extent, right, it's a state law that you have to.
Pick it up.
Pick it up on, on your public property, but if that was applied.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the specific state law, but I would think that would be what you'd want to do.
I guess the question is, these conditions we're talking about now, if this was going under the local regs to the Concom or the Board of Health, are these conditions that would be applied in a typical?
I doubt it.
Okay, so that's.
We have language in the Hewitt Slending Regulations about.
But that's their own internal.
Correct.
So, but here's my question. If this was a subdivision, or it was just a multifamily special permit, and so they, these applicants were going in front of the Board of Health and/or the. and/or the Concom, would either of those boards, under their local regs, be requiring these types of regulations?
Not sure what they would be.
Because I'm wondering if we're applying conditions that are not applied to unsubsidized projects.
Well, I think the answer is that this project would not be allowed under the local regs because of other environmental constraints. So, we need to be creative to come up with appropriate regs because they're in circumstances where otherwise they wouldn't be prohibited, wouldn't be allowed. So, I think it's appropriate to come up with conditions, it's not that we're treating them adversely.
Right, I do think the fertilizer, that type of thing, is something that the Conservation Commission would speak to. If you had two or three single-family homes here, and they had dogs, though, is this likely the condition?
No, I don't, I don't think it is, but it would seem, is there a way that we can key it in to the results, I'm speculating here, of either test wells or something that, you know, if, if what's being picked up is too much canine feces, then...
I mean, it does, even like, too many geese raises the bacteria in ponds and stuff, so I'm sure it's not, if you have a lot of dogs, it's not a good thing. I would think that the applicant would probably want, in their own thing, something like that, because that's going to make all the neighbors not liking each other if there's a lot.
Right, but in terms of what we want to put in?
Yeah, I don't know that anybody else has anything like that, I was just asked to come up with some ideas to offset some of those things, and that was kind of one of them I came up with, but I...
But do you see a health and safety issue, really health issue here, because of the proximity of the project to other protected resources, that we should really be focusing on this? Because if not, I agree with Susan, we should not go...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that it's necessarily going to be a big deal, and if it were, it probably would be handled internally at the condominium association.
So, Susan, I think we're, we're taking out Roman IV.
Next one is storage and disposal hazardous materials. I think it's mostly the disposal.
I will say that I worked on a matter with the Conservation Commission where they limited what a property was building, like a barn that they were going to be doing work in, woodworking, and they did have conditions related to the chemicals that could be stored. So, I know that that is something that the Conservation Commission will condition in appropriate circumstances, so it is something that's applied equally to all types of, it's kind of location-specific, not type of project.
Right, if you're next to what, if you're within their jurisdiction.
Right.
So, require the developer to include in the condominium documents rules, so what rules are we specifically suggesting, so that we're not vague and it's just a...
Well, what, I mean, what I was getting to was if somebody paints, not that you can get much of this, you paint your room, and you paint it with oil paint, and then you wash your brushes in the sink.
Right.
That could upset the biological balance of the treatment system, such as it doesn't work. Another thing which people will do, if you put too much bleach down there, it'll kill stuff, too.
Right.
I think that even too much, like, medicine dump down can have an effect, it depends on what it is, if it's antibiotics, because it's a biological process, the treatment system.
Okay, so we're talking about including in the condominium documents rules to safeguard the wastewater treatment of the system from improper dumping or disposal of hazardous materials by the residents.
Right, toxic to the system, or even if it's not a toxic chemical, it could be toxic to the system. And we don't know exactly what the system is, so we could kind of leave it a little bit...
Right. You okay with that, Emily?
So, six.
Six, which is requiring homeowners to acknowledge receipt of condominium rules, isn't that part of standard?
It is, and I, I would say that, having worked on a number of permits related to, there are, the boards, both boards typically do require that certain conditions be included in the homeowners, but I haven't seen this specific condition before. And their deeds are going to state that it's subject to.
Yes, I don't, I would strike that.
Right.
So, we've got the low water flows.
So, this is a no irrigation wells.
Yep.
Yeah, so I would just go down to the, one, two, three, four, five, the further stress?
Yeah.
That then, just take everything out to there, just say no irrigation wells will be allowed for the project, or?
I would just say, we recognize that the applicant has not proposed...
Okay, sure.
Is that correct?
Except for you don't want them in the future, either.
No, 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 I'd say, and, and as a result, we are conditioning, and they haven't created, you know, presented any justification.
You're talking about in the discussion saying that, and in the actual condition, it's just no irrigation well shall be permitted on the property, because you never know when the homeowners association is going to say, we don't like yellow grass, we're going to put it in irrigation.
Right, but they have neither requested, proposed, or provided any justification, so we haven't done an analysis of how that, what the impact would be. So, as a result, we're...
Right, I would note again that this is, was in what they have received in advance, reviewed, and commented on, and they didn't comment on it, so I would think that just a straight condition saying no irrigation wells...
Irrigation wells will be allowed.
Will be allowed on the property would be...
Right.
And then I'd say, I'd go further, just say landscape planting shall be native drought tolerant plantings.
Yeah, I agree.
We're going to reference that they have not proposed any, so it's not as if we're, they proposed it, we're striking it.
Yep.
So, then, you're talking about future landscape plantings, because we're already talking about what has to be in a landscape plan, they have to be native originally, so this is going in the later, so, okay.
All right.
All right.
My work conditions.
We're on J.
J, so they're going to require the state wetlands.
Okay, so J is just one, is just the generic, you have to follow the State Wetlands Act.
Right.
Okay, the question I have, that I flagged today on two and three, is if the notice of intent is only under the state act, and the state act would not otherwise require either of these things, then these are not something where we, I think the board should be asking them to do when they go to the Concom. I think it's something you're saying they need to do on these project plans now.
Correct.
Right?
Absolutely right.
Okay, so...
I would say two, we would just say, on the second line, where it says compensatory storage on a 1.5 to 1 plus or minus basis, I would take out on a 1.5 to 1 plus or minus basis, because they will, the state regulations do require...
One-to-one.
Compensatory storage.
Right.
But it's one-to-one at each incremental foot of elevation of fill within the floodplain.
Right, so the board had discussed this.
Hard to explain.
Right.
This was connected to one of the waivers that you had discussed.
Right, I think the 1.5 to 1 is the bylaw requirement, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right, Emily, we did.
Which you can change.
Right, right, no, but you're exactly, we did discuss doing the one and a half to one.
Firm should be spelled out.
Now, this one I know, flood insurance rate map.
Okay, you know what, I'm going to...
I'll have to ask her.
I'm thinking again, no, I'm trying to think in context now. I think that J-1 should actually get moved to Section 3, because that, these conditions have to do with what, how they need to change the plans, that's not about changing the plans.
Agreed.
So, I think that needs, J-1 needs to be moved to Section 3.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so now we're down to just two and three, which will become one and two. You know what, I'm going to, I'm sorry, I apologize, back up, I think that I-1 needs to be moved to Section 3 as well.
But that's about how the system is going to be designed, so don't we want the final plans to show that it's been designed and compliant with? Don't we want the final plan that approved by these guys to have been approved by the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission in accordance with the state regulations?
So, you're saying the final plan said that the, they will go to the peer review engineer to confirm compliance with this permit?
Will already have been approved under the state standards.
Yeah, because they're submitting it 30 days before they're trying to get a building permit.
Yeah, so you're, you're right, they do.
Okay, so then we leave them...
And maybe rework the wording of J-1, so it doesn't say prior commencement of any work, but that the plan...
All right, so we leave them where they are, okay, I'm sorry, I'm just thinking as we're going, and, so maybe we can leave them where they are. Shall prior to the commencement, so it's not, okay, shall, so maybe we just have a mirror I-1, that, well, okay, sewage flows down, permitted.
Susan, let me make a suggestion, so we can get through this.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I think in terms of where we place the conditions...
It goes, that's not relevant.
We'll leave that to you.
Yes.
I want to get through the substance.
Yeah, I apologize. All right, so, in J, what's now number two and three, we'll take out the reference to the notice of intent, it's the plans that are being submitted are going to provide this. So, I guess the question is, Joe Freeman had suggested it doesn't need to be 1.5 to 1, but Joe Fisher had suggested that in prior hearings, so I guess, just where do you guys want to come out on that?
Remember, we did talk about that, now that you mention it. It's not a requirement of the state regs.
Right, but it's the local bylaw requirement, and the question is whether, I mean, whether or not we think doing this additional compensatory storage is beneficial to the town, is it really going to make the project that uneconomic? And the discussion we had is, yes, it's beneficial to the town, it's consistent with how the bylaws are protected in the town by the Conservation Commission, and I didn't get a reaction from the applicant that this was going to be a problem.
They did not object to this.
Correct. Yeah, so, I think we should stay with it.
The last one, I think this is, again, I wouldn't reference the notice of intent.
No, would you say the...
So, they'll show that any portion of the protected buffer strip, and I believe that was John's, any portion of 50-foot protected buffer strip that is disturbed shall be planted with native vegetation consisting of trees, shrubs, and herbaceous plants.
Right, destabilize the slope. Yep, yeah, so it's not notice of intent.
Agreed.
So, this, this is one that may get split up between what the plans have to show, and then, let's see.
The last thing you gave, yes.
Okay, can we...
Okay, so I just want to make sure that you're reading into your conditions, John's language from his, what was that hearing, June 19th?
18th.
June 18th memo, which, so his recommended condition, his first recommended condition from his June 18 submission. All right, just so, we'll work that in, I just want to make sure that we're referencing it.
Yes.
It's going to get worked into that condition?
Yes, exactly, yes.
Yeah, that's perfect.
All right, CJC 61814, okay.
It's okay.
Number one, okay.
Okay, then K, we're just saying the applicant shall, prior to the commencement of any work, comply with Mass General Laws, Chapter 87, the Shatri Act.
Yep.
That's fine.
All right. All right, so Section 2, they did not have, on the Main Street right-of-way work was all, came from the Highway Department, and the applicant had no comments on it.
In terms of the trenches, this is consistent with what I recall that we agreed on.
This is all like you're cutting into Main Street, this is how you have to put it back.
Right, and so, just going down to H, to H, we've got John's comment, the design shall not create areas that trap runoff to avoid accumulation of water in the Main Street right-of-way. That's a, I guess that's a performance standard.
Right, want to get the water off to the side of the road.
And we're saying this because we don't have enough information on the design to know.
No, I have enough information on the design to know that they would, the way they drew it, so that I'm trying to make them not draw it that way.
Right.
So, when the final plans come in, and they go into your review, you'd be able to tell whether that would occur?
Yep.
And you could make technical comments to say, you need to tweak this to make it not happen, is that the thought?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, now we're up to general pre-construction conditions, number three, B-6.
That's a whole page at once, folks.
The first comment we have from the applicant is when you get to C.
Okay, right, so I'm looking at A. So, 3A, the engineer will be made available at reasonable times with adequate notice for consultation with the building commissioner. Susan?
I'm sorry.
So, I'm on 3A.
Okay.
The engineer will be made available at reasonable times with adequate notice for consultation with the building commissioner. I would strike out and the board, just say, the building commissioner or his agent.
Okay.
What about your review engineer?
Who would be, the review engineer would be the building commissioner's agent, or you think, no?
Board's agent.
Yeah.
Okay, so, right, so we say the building commissioner...
And the board's review engineer?
Yes.
So, they're me or...
Yes, you're right.
You want to say review engineer, or building and zoning administrator?
I think board and board's agent.
I don't want to reference, I don't want it to appear that they've got to come back to us.
So, we can say building commissioner...
So, the building commissioner, the zoning administrator, or their agents.
All right, okay, so that was A. C is, B is just a pre-construction sidewalk.
Right.
All right, so in C, we accepted the applicant's language, this is if they need to do work outside of what they've shown on the plans for the grading. Our language was more specific, and I think, but I don't think it, I think it comes out to the same place. So, what they have is, if they're going to go outside what's shown on the plans, the applicant shall seek written authorization from the zoning board under the regs, which is basically they come in for modification, whether it's substantial and substantial, et cetera. The language that had been proposed was the applicant shall provide evidence of construction easements or other authorization allowing the work to take place, because if you look at it, it says outside the property boundaries...
Which could be on private...
Which could be private property, but I think if they come back to the board, and the board says, you're on someone else's property, the board's going to say, that's substantial, we don't have the authorization, you have to get an easement, I think you get to the same place. But they're saying, if they're changing something on the plans, under the regs, their first stop is here.
Right.
So, conceptually, I didn't have a problem with that, because if they're trying to go onto some private property, and they can't show you they have the right to do it, you're going to stop them at that point.
Right.
I don't know, I mean...
I don't understand what's being, so, if the applicant, if the applicant is proposing to do anything outside of what they've proposed to us already...
They have to come back.
They have to come back.
Yeah.
So, that's, we don't need to...
Well, that, and that's what it says.
Mm-hmm.
Originally, it was worded, they had to go out and get the easements and do everything else, that was the original language.
And that's because the grading plans, and maybe John can explain a little bit more of the grading plans are not...
Are not unclear.
Yeah, basically, there it is.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, are you okay with their change? If not, well, we can go back to the original language, but their request is, if we're going to change something, we're directed to come back to the board, and then it takes its course from there.
Why aren't we just doing a general condition? If the applicant finds during development of final plans, it'll be necessary to do work other than what's been proposed in this application, which would include, for example, grading outside the property boundaries, it could be anything.
Because there's going to be changes that are not shown on these plans, right?
Right.
These are conceptual plans. They are coming back, and this, they're not coming back to the board, they're coming back to the review engineer, right, for his review that it's consistent with the conceptual plans.
Right.
So we need something for John to know that, you know, if there's a little bit of extra grading that happens to go over a property line, that that's something the applicant is told to go back to the board for, versus if, you know, the specifications on a light post or something change, he can say that that's consistent with the conceptual plans.
It's, I think, the difference between a field change and something that requires to come back to the board.
Right, okay.
I think there was, this arose out of the concern that the grading plans are very conceptual, and they go right up to the edge of the property lines.
I'm just concerned that.
Too narrow.
And we, the courts and the HAC strike down requirements requiring the applicant to come back to the zoning board.
We should leave it the way it was then, right? That they provide evidence that they have the authority to, they have construction easements to allow that temporary.
Right. I mean, to the extent that they modify the project, the regulations require that they provide written notification to the board.
Right, so we don't have to.
We have had an instance, though, during the hearing process where they made substantial modification.
Yep.
And they did not notify, follow the regulations. I'm not suggesting that that would happen during the construction phase, but it, you know what I mean? I mean, yes, could the HAC strike it out because the regulations already cover it? They could do that. So I guess it's, you know.
But it just smacks of the kind of conduct that the HAC and the courts look for of an overreaching zoning board, and I just don't want to create that appearance.
The only reason, I understand what you're saying, and that's why I've been asking the questions I have been asking throughout your deliberation. I would say that the concern about the extent of the grading.
Right.
For multiple reasons, whether it be, are you literally stopping and starting at this property line? Is it going to be that clean? How many trees are coming down during their grading? There's been so many issues around the conceptual nature of the grading plan.
Right.
That to suggest that there could be a significant modification is consistent with the discussions during the hearing.
Yep.
But at the same time, the regulations do require that a change in the plan be a notification to the board for a finding that it's substantial or insubstantial. If you're comfortable with relying on the procedure under the regulations, then I, you know, you may not need to have a specific condition.
Then why don't we just say, if the applicant finds, you know, during the development, you're necessary to grade outside the boundary, property boundaries of the porch of Main Street right-of-way, shown approved plans, or to make other substantial changes in the plans, they'll follow the.
They'll follow the regulation.
Yeah, and cite the regulation.
Okay.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Good.
So this will just be, so that is C, and it will be a site to modification provision.
In the regs. Yep.
In regs.
Yep.
Okay.
The D, five grand to replenish the peer review account?
So this is Section 56.0511, changes after the issuance of permit. And if the applicant desires to change the details of its project as approved by the board, it shall promptly notify the board in writing describing such change, and the board has 20 days to determine whether or not it's substantial or insubstantial.
Right, okay.
Okay.
So now we go to D.
I'm sorry, I'll go over this. So does that mean that these final plans really do need to come back to the board and not just to your review engineer? I mean, so they're going to change, right? They're not going to be able to build all these little boxes on this plan, just because they haven't developed the final plans yet.
Right.
So do you need to see and approve the final plans and not just rely on your technical consultant?
And make a determination that they're substantial and insubstantial.
Well, the, there's going to be changes made, and the review consultants, the Building Commissioner, whoever, is going to either say, this is consistent with the plans or not, and then they will have to make at least the initial determinations as to whether or not it's significant. And then if it's, if they think it's significant, it's going to have to come back to us. But each change is not going to be reviewed by this board.
Who's the they, Joe? The review engineer or the applicant?
The applicant, no, no.
The building, so the plans, okay, so you have these plans.
Right.
These were defined as the project plans.
Correct.
The approved plans are required, everything we just went through in that subsection B.
Right.
As long as what they submit to Emily, and Emily gives to John, and John looks at them and says, this is all consistent with what they submitted with the required modifications, you're good. If all of a sudden a new unit pops up, that's a problem. If all of a sudden grading expands by even a foot into private property, that's not consistent.
Correct.
I think there's a judgment call that's going to get made. John's going to provide comments within the 30 days and say, copying Emily, saying, these are the, all the things, comments I have. Mike's not going to issue a building permit if he flags one as saying inconsistent with the plans. At that point, they can't get a building permit. They have to come back here. So I think there's, it's, if the process, you know, works as it typically does.
But I don't view us as reviewing the plans absent the applicant coming back here.
Right, and they will be forced back here if the Building Commissioner, after review by everyone who has to review these plans, say, it doesn't match up.
Right.
Right, then they will choose, they will either make it conform.
Right.
Or they will come here and ask you to determine whether it's substantial or not. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. All right, so we will just reference back to 560511, which is a change after issuance of the permit.
Yes. Okay, D is the $5,000.
They did not object to that. E, we're going to insert the monitoring.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
In C.
Conditions and effect during construction.
They do not have any comments until number eight. The one thing, the one that's not, we're on C on page B7, where there was, the board discussed adding a, during construction, you can't disturb the monitoring wells, there will be a condition added to that effect.
Good, good.
All right, so then.
About the size of, sorry, but under three, the size of the sign, 50 square feet?
That's far out from the Craftsman Village.
Is that, I was just going to ask, is that, is that how big they, is that how big we did that?
I don't know how big they actually, you know, what was that?
Because in residential districts, I was just looking at, the maximum ground sign is 20 square feet.
But did they allow it previously?
But if we've allowed it for others, that's.
This was just something that pulled.
That was my question.
What do we think is appropriate?
Yeah. Because I know Craftsman Village had a sign, but it didn't seem like it was that big.
How did the 50 feet, do you know how it came up in Craftsman Village?
Yeah, so I mean, a sheet of plywood's 32.
Right.
Right? A sheet of plywood is sort of.
Yeah, let's not create ISOs.
We don't have to.
No, but it's a mark, I mean, you know, I think we've seen, we've seen marketing signs that are bigger than 20 square feet.
Right.
For subdivisions or condos, I know that.
Correct. So this is 50. What would you suggest?
I mean, yeah, I mean, 10-foot, I don't know, I would say, I mean, I could be comfortable with something like a 5 by 8, 40 square foot sign.
Okay, changing to 50 to 40.
After all these years, I'm getting real sensitive about signs.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we've got that it's going to be going for three years.
What are you up to? What number are you up to?
Still on three, C3, sign, temporary sign, be displayed for no longer than three years from the date of issuance.
Or the day of closing.
Which term shall be renewable at the board's discretion. Again, I, just the optics of they got to come back to the board doesn't look good.
Well, it doesn't, whichever, so three years, right, I mean.
Why don't we just drop the which term shall be renewable?
Yeah.
Just drop it, just end.
Whichever occurs first.
Yep.
And just strike that, and if they want to come back, then they'll come back.
Then they can come back.
Correct.
I mean, or they can just drop it down to one that complies with zoning, and then they don't have an issue.
Right, right. Okay, so we're ending that with whichever occurs first. Good. And the delivery period, that's, they didn't have any issues with this?
They do not have any comment until number eight.
Okay, so I'm fine with four, I'm fine with five.
Six, seven.
So number six, during construction, the applicant shall be able to locate a construction trailer on the premises. Since this is right on Main Street, is there anything we can say about the location, or just something so it's not an ISO?
Yes, we could say the construction trailer located, not close, I mean, it was a long roadway.
Yeah.
There's no reason to stick it up there.
How long, wasn't the roadway 500 feet or?
Yeah, it's a ways.
Yeah, I mean, it was, so why don't we just put a, not closer than, let's give a 200 feet, 200 feet from the.
From Main Street.
From Main Street? I mean, you know, it doesn't have to be in the very back corner of the site, but it just should be out of the way, so if you're driving by, you don't.
Right. Okay.
Main Street right-of-way.
Yep.
Okay.
So H is the one about the soil removal and the waivers.
Right.
So they, there was a little bit of wordsmithing going on with this one. My understanding, and Emily, I think it was the same, is that once they get past 10 cubic yards, which is the kind of free amount under the bylaws, under the zoning bylaw, then they would offer it first to DPW, and then if there was no, if DPW didn't want it, or there was no other site, then they could take it off.
Yep.
They had reworded it that they, you know, could only be removed after written notification to DPW that there is no other location. That's not the same as offering it to DPW.
Right.
So we did not accept that change, and so it reads, you know, after notifications, provide DPW that the material is available, and thereafter, if there is no other available location, and hang 'em.
How quickly does DPW have to respond, so we don't get an argument that this is unduly delaying the project?
Whatever you think is reasonable.
Just say promptly.
Yeah, I mean, I think they'll say, either they have space for it and they want it or they won't. I don't, I don't see it's something they're going to drag out.
Yeah, so I think we should keep the requirement and just include a prompt response by DPW. And then it says the applicant shall file a detailed plan, is it with the board? I don't, I prefer it go to.
To the Building Commissioner.
Building Commissioner.
Their next, so the next comment you'll see is under 9A, where they asked to remove drainage channel, drainage inlet, because they have, they, it would be impossible to keep, stay 100 feet from them.
We cannot logistically comply with this condition as written.
Because they're going to be building those. I kind of agree. I think it's really within 100 feet of the resource areas. Do we just want to say of any wetland resource area?
Yeah, because it, there is, when you get into B, when they talked about stockpiles, it was a wetlands, because Wetlands Act is defined earlier on, so we could say the same thing.
A resource area is not necessarily what you and I would think is a wetland, so.
Resource area.
Right.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, so that was 9A. Then they don't have any more comments in nine.
Can I back up to eight? I apologize.
Yep.
So if the applicant files a detailed plan with the Building Commissioner to remove 1 and 10 cubic yards of material, are they allowed to do it?
Right, because you're waiving.
Because we're waiving the removal requirements, yeah.
You're wa, yes, because I think it was if they exceed 10 cubic yards, then they have to offer it to the DPW.
So they can do it, but they just have to offer it to the DPW.
But it says, soil, loam, sand, gravel, or other earth material of less than 10 cubic yards shall only be removed in a lot after written notification to DPW.
Oh, that's for the less than.
That's less than.
And then if they do more, they're supposed to come.
Back to you guys to consider whether or not you still want to grant the waiver. But you can change that.
I think we need to deal with that now. We shouldn't require them to come back.
It's, so my notes from the waiver chart is, to the extent, not under the 5C exemption. So some of it's going to be exempt altogether.
Right.
Then you're going to waive up to 10 cubic yards and look at where it's going. Those are my notes.
I would say come back when it's more detailed to 10 cubic yards.
Well, what criteria would we apply? Why would we have them come back?
So you have two waivers that are going on. You have the zoning, which is really looking at what's the impact of all of this removal. So you're looking at the actual impact on the abutting properties. So if you remove too much, is there, are they going to have a giant drop out, you know what I mean?
Right.
And then you're looking at what's the impact on trucking all of this through the town. So those are the impacts that are looked at under the zoning bylaw.
What have they proposed for removal?
They haven't.
They haven't. And then the other bylaw that you're being asked to waive is, under general bylaws, the one that says you can't remove them from the town. So there's no other performance type standards, just like it's not supposed to leave the town.
Right.
So in connection with the zoning bylaw, you said, well, a lot of this may be the exempt, under the exempt, because it's where buildings and roads are going. However, all the regrading, et cetera, is not. And that's when you gave them a waiver up to 10 cubic yards.
Right.
And then it was like, okay, but that's as far as we're willing to waive it. Then the whole issue of where it's going was really a response to the general bylaw that says it can't leave the town, where you said, offer it to the ZBA first. So you got to bifurcate, I mean, to DPW.
The DPW.
Unless you need some for your vegetable garden.
Right, we do.
So.
It's going to go with Emily's back.
So if we separate the who you're offering it to, there was this discussion of, if it's not exempt.
Right.
We're only waiving up to 10 cubic yards, and it really was not discussed what happens when it hits 11 cubic yards.
So I think the answer is, they have not made a request to move more than 10.
Right.
And so they haven't presented to us any argument why a waiver, that if we don't waive beyond 10, that it would have any impact on the project.
So that would be an item.
Totally hypothetical waiver that they're asking for, and so I don't think we should be required to grant it.
Okay, so at the time that the plans are presented and reviewed, they would have to calculate, hopefully, for review.
Right.
How much is being removed that is not exempt, and if it exceeds 10 cubic yards, now they've modified the plan.
Right.
Beyond inconsistent with the approval.
Yes.
Okay, so.
And I would treat it the same way, yeah.
So then, under, what are we under? We're under eight.
So just, I'm so sorry.
We're under eight. No, it's good catch.
So the removal of less than 10 cubic yards is already exempt?
Right.
So this is like a non-waiver?
Right.
So it's maybe even a condition that could be shortened up?
Well, let's do it then.
Can I come through the bylaws?
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's less than 10 yards, it's allowed.
So the remove, they're also exempt if it's building, structure, street, driveway, sidewalk.
Right.
Or a pertinence incidental to. Or a pertinent incidental to.
But doesn't the first sentence pick that up? Materials from the site in excess of that displaced by the approved construction?
Yes, and then, well, that's in proposed subdivisions.
Okay.
Which this is not, so, you know, this is not perfect language.
You know what, maybe it needs to stay in because the general bylaw then says that the removal period.
Yeah, from town.
From the town shall not be allowed, so it could be removed from the.
So we are allowing it removed from the town if the DPW doesn't want it.
Yep.
That's our waiver on the general condition.
Right.
And with respect to the specific condition over 10 cubic yards, they've not made any specific requests and so we can't even evaluate the magnitude of of what they're looking to have removed.
So that means that when we get to the waivers, you are not waiving that zoning bylaw requirement because to the extent they're exempt, they're exempt, so you don't need to waive it and you have not granted them any waiver exceeding the exempt amount.
Because they.
So they haven't asked for it.
Correct.
Okay, so this will, this can still read the same way.
Says board, the building commissioner.
Right.
Yeah, we take out that last sentence about, right.
Right.
Okay, so I think that was it for their comments on nine.
I'm up to occupancy related conditions.
May I just make, I'm sorry, nine C excavation de-watering shall be performed in accordance with DEP Stormwater Management Performance Standards and the provisions of the NPDES Construction De-watering General Permit.
Performance Standards and the NPDC, it's a good thing we kept that acronym in there, blah, blah, huh, and the NPDES.
The NPDES Construction De-watering.
Yes.
General Permit.
Is that capital CDP?
Yes, CDGP.
C, D?
GP. General Permit.
Construction, de-watering.
General Permit.
General.
Construction, stormwater.
Yeah, general permit.
But this is for de-water.
De-watering permit.
And I would maybe put a parenthetical if applicable, and I'm not certain if it is or not.
Applicable. Okay.
That's federal law, so they shouldn't have anything.
Yeah. Do you have anything else in nine? So we're on D. D. Emily and I did not accept the recommend, their requested change, so as drafted, and I think it came directly from Jeff Durk, it's they have to provide a certification that they have their required sightlines. The applicant's requested change.
So we're talking about one, right?
We're talking about one.
Provided issuance of any accuracy, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator, not us.
Okay, yep, well, we'll go through. I'll make a note here.
Global change. Yeah.
Change from.
The board.
Board to zoning admin.
Right.
In some places, we put the building commissioner, but we noted those, okay.
And the building commissioner with an engineer's certificate, right, sort of in the required sightlines of site are provided to and from in accordance with.
Okay, so the requirement is they need an engineer certification that the required sightlines are provided.
Where do we define what the required sightlines are?
That's on the record.
Well, it says in accordance.
It's in accordance with the approved plans.
And that was, and that's in Jeff Durk's memo.
Okay, so.
Traffic memos.
Are they on the, are they on the approved plans, the sightlines, are they?
There is a sightline plan.
Right, right.
All right, let's talk about this in a sec. Let me just tell you what they requested and then we'll talk about the word, the wording on this, okay? They requested in lieu of certifying that the required lines of sight are provided from the then construction project site roadway. An engineer certificate prepared by registered professional engineer certifying that trees have been removed in accordance with the approved plan set according to the waiver of the tree ordinance under this permit.
No, we're not gonna go there.
Based on the discussion at the last hearing, Emily and I did not accept that change. Okay, so now, if let's, if we kind of just think through the wording on this, this language is Jeff's language, okay? The approved plans, as they're going to be defined, are going to be their project plans, which includes a regrading plan. And this plan.
Right.
Although this is not listed. So this is not right now listed as the project plans, although they did submit it.
Yep.
But the approved plans are as modified by the conditions in section one, at B. Section B says they have to comply with the Shade Tree Act. So I guess, are you comfortable or do you want to think about how this is worded?
So I'm not all that comfortable yet. The, is there a standard for the required sightlines, so it's not based on.
You have the traffic report.
But based upon certain sightline requirements as recommended by.
Yes, 300 and 150.
Let's include that plan if that's.
So is this plan C, this is C2B.
Let's reference that.
Yeah.
C2B is, is referenced as a project plan in attachment A, so on the first page of packet.
Right.
Can I just take a peek at that?
Yeah, so we improve, we do the tree plan on that.
It's very interesting because this one shows the removal of the three original trees.
That's correct.
Only one of which was submitted by the board of selectmen during their hearing.
Right.
So you have this, but this also shows the required sight distances. Let me just.
Is that stopping sight distance or intersection sight distance? Remember, we had that?
Intersection.
No, I think it's stopping.
It's stopping sight distance, yeah.
Intersection's a lot longer.
It's the, it's the distance that a car traveling on Main Street requires to safely stop.
Does he?
Yeah.
At the, at the 90th percentile speed.
Where does it have the distances? What am I missing here?
Is it up on here?
Is this it? Is this the distance?
Yeah, that's what it says, sight triangle. It doesn't specify what these distances are.
I know it's on the record. It's in one of the traffic reports or traffic memorandums?
And I, I don't, I didn't bring everything with me because my file's so huge, but in the back and forth between the traffic engineers, there's discussions because, as you may remember, one of the resident had a review engineer that said it really should be longer and both their engineer and Jeff Durk responded and said, no, the appropriate standard is this.
Right.
So there was lots of back and forth in the record about what the applicable standard is. But if you would like us to pull out the exact numbers.
Yeah, it's based on the speed of traffic on Main Street.
Review engineer's middles, we can do that.
My understanding, Joe, is that we're talking about the sightline exiting the site.
Correct.
It is not the sightline of people traveling on Main Street. You're correct that it is, that the sightline from the site is measured based on travel time on Main Street, but it is not.
Here, sorry, it's in gray, right.
There's the triangle.
This is the intersection sight distance. I'll see, it's in this light gray shading.
Okay.
325 feet plus or minus in both directions.
You might show it to him.
Yeah, see that? I S the intersection sight distance, and that's what that is for traffic at the intersection to safely see. Stopping sight is for the Main Street.
So I think we should say.
Intersection sight distance, 325.
This condition should be the intersection sight distance.
Okay, with an engineer's certificate certifying that the required.
Intersection.
Intersection.
Sight distance, SIGHT.
Right.
Sight distance of 320 feet.
I've seen it, believe me.
Is it 320 or 325?
325 feet.
325 feet, plus or minus.
Of 325, plus or minus what?
That's what it says here.
Okay, plus or minus are provided, is provided. To and from the then constructed project site roadway, period.
Yep.
Why is it being filed with the town engineer?
Because it's an, well, it's an alter, they, to accomplish it, they need to alter the right of way and we should have those plans.
Okay, yep, all right, so provided to, shall provide the zoning administrator.
And the building commissioner.
And building commissioner. Okay.
Perfect.
Try, did you hit the override button?
Yes.
We good with that?
Okay, that's good.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Number two is the Craftsman Village issue.
The next comment is on four, so.
What do we, what do we, yeah, stay on two.
Yeah, do you have anything with two?
Oh, okay.
Real minor, no apostrophe under BMPs.
The only reason why I highlighted this is because I think, is this a note from you, Emily, that if you, three is about as built as well, so I guess the question is, are they separate? One is at 75% occupancy, three is at before final market rate unit. I guess the question on the BMP is 75%. In other multifamilies, you know, we have the 85% rule for kind of completion of site work or site improvements. So I, I think this just is a carryover, as she says, from Craftsman Village, so whatever.
It was actually in Craftsman Village, it was initially prior to any occupancy permit and recently modified the board to prior to more than 75%.
So we should do this as 85 because that's what our general bylaw requires.
And this is just the ASGO plans for BMPs, not overall.
Right, so that's the question because on three, it has it even later. Three, it's not until the final CO.
So you could lump those both into 85%?
I do not want to do anything that's more strict than the general bylaw.
Yeah, I agree.
Yep, 85.
So 85 for everything or just the BMPs and then prior to final CO? Or everything else?
We should say stormwater BMPs, so.
Stormwater?
Yeah, stormwater best management practices. And I think in the last sentence.
You want capital W? Yes, no, do you like two words or one word on stormwater?
It's just one, it's just one.
I've seen it.
Yeah, I've seen it both ways, but I think it's one.
The spell check doesn't like it as one.
No, I know it doesn't. I've added it to mine, so I don't have to deal with it. Requirements consistent with DEP Stormwater Manual rather than guidance is noted in D.
I'm sorry, so we just repeat that one more time?
Yeah, down in the last sentence there, with, with, with the DEP Stormwater Manual.
So, so we're changing number two to 85%.
As consistent with the DEP Stormwater Manual, period, okay. I'm sorry.
So number two, we're changing to 85%.
And we'll leave three as is?
Yes.
Okay, and four, the language requested, which Emily and I accepted in the draft, I will show, well, there's a question in here that obviously needs to be answered, there's a italics, but the language they added is about, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10? Seven, eight, nine, 10 lines down, it starts here in the line. They requested the language that starts with the board and then goes for, one, two, three, four, four, ends on four lines down with the word approved.
One of the things we need to be careful of is whether or not they request it or not, if they request us to violate 40B, we can't.
No, I am just noting that they, yes.
So the board and council submit to the applicant writing any comments or. I think this, this would be bumped by HAC.
Right, so we don't need, this is, but this is similar to the whole, they're, they're submitting plans to the review engineer for technical. This is review by council for complying, that the homeowners association condominium documents comply with the requirements of this bylaw. So it's not the board's review.
Right.
So it's submitted to Emily.
All condominium documents submitted, so all condominium documents shall be submitted to the zoning administrator.
Yep.
Prior to execution for review and approval as to consistency with the conditions contained herein, the zoning administrator shall submit to the applicant in writing any comments or request revisions to the condo documents within 30 days. Is 30 days too soon? Do we push that to 60?
No, 30 days is fine, but I mean, Emily will request that I look at them.
Which is fine.
Right.
And if she's got issues, she'll request it to us, but I don't want the applicant to be, I'm sounding like a broken record, but we just can't do that, it's a setup.
So you just, we'll just change to zoning administrator in each place where it says.
Council for the town and this board or the board and council.
Okay, I, I mean, I just did this without, just in connection with the Beale Street 40B, I reviewed them for consistency with the permit, I worked with the council for the other side, it got worked out very smoothly.
No provision of the condominium documents required by this comprehensive permit shall be material amended.
Typically, there's a provision, I have, all right, so let's look at this, typically, there is a condition that the condominium documents include that condition.
Yeah, I got you, yeah, yep.
So I don't know if you just, we can move it up as to what needs to be included in the condominium documents that it has to include that provision rather than.
Yep.
So this is prior to them getting occupancy, where does this say? Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the project, okay, it's near the bottom of it, all right. Oh wait, see, there's a question in the middle here. Reference O, there's a question mark. Reference, okay, D14 is probably an old reference because that's been in there a long time. The O and M plan shows up, where did we just go over that? Was that a post-construction? Where is, oh, it's in E4 now. It's in E4. Yes, I think we should reference the O and M plan, all right, so.
You handle that.
All right, I'll talk about E4 in a second.
We've got a lot more to do, we really, we really need to push through this.
Yep.
Okay, so we're in post-construction and ongoing conditions. Did they have any objections?
They didn't come in on any of E.
Do we just want to change the, at four, who approves the O and M plan?
Stormwater, which should be.
Okay, so the question here is, is there an O and M plan that was submitted by the applicant in connection with this project?
No, not yet, I don't think so.
So it's going, so when does that get submitted under this? Do we have a submission requirement under B?
I would be part, I would assume it's part of the stormwater management plan.
It should be, but let's, well, let's make it explicit.
So that would be on B3, under stormwater. Is that when us O and M plan would be submitted, John, with the construction plans or when would be the typical time?
Yeah, it's submitted, it's one of the standards.
Yeah, it's one of the stormwater performance standards.
H, so it would be. So, H, so it would be H5 on page B4, an O and M plan.
Yep.
And it's going to get reviewed by the review engineer. Okay, so then we'll define it, so we're going to get, and it'll be defined, so it'll just be the O and M plan.
Yes.
Period.
Yep.
And then we're adding a number five, ongoing maintenance of the monitoring wells.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
And there was a six, too, right?
No, that, that was somewhere...
Text from B?
Is that somewhere else?
All right.
Yes.
We had talked about...
You're right, it's from, the, the, there were a few, the, the fertilizer, organic fertilizer, is that, okay, so, insert six.
Okay, we're up to affordability standards, F, we're on page B10.
Okay, I highlighted in yellow because that wasn't an insertion by the applicant.
All affordability conditions shall be subject to approval by the subsidizing agency and are intended to be consistent with all program rules, regulations, and policies of the subsidizing agency. Does the subsidizing, does the subsidizing agency have that approval right under 40B right now?
I would say with respect to number one, that is what they are required to have for units of a 16-unit be affordable. I don't see why that would be subject to the approval of subsidizing agency. However, they have modified this plan, so they do need to get a final certificate of approval from the subsid, so yes and no? I mean, if the subsidizing agents couldn't legally say, oh no, that's all right, we'll only let you have two or three, so...
So let's just put in the beginning, to the extent required by, by law, all affordability conditions are subject to. And then the first one, the project shall be comprised of no fewer than four units, which is four out of 16, which is 25%.
Yep.
So it should say, no fewer than four units, or 25%, whichever is greater. Do we want to say that, whichever is greater?
Well, I don't think you do, because what if they voluntarily reduce it, reduce the size of the project?
Okay, so let's, just do it as a, how's the rounding done?
I say, they, they're okay with four units, I think we keep it a four unit.
But if they, if, if they go to HAC, they appeal our decision, and as a result, they think they can build more units. We're not limited to the four.
No, but under law, they have to provide 25%.
Have to, they can't build it unless 25% are affordable.
Yeah, so I...
Okay.
Okay, and, and the discussion is going to say it's a 16-unit project.
That's fine, okay, that's fine. Okay.
The, number three, they added.
Right.
And since it was, it's an additional condition.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, this is the local...
Right, local preference.
Preference, and we know what the process is.
Yep.
I mean, they lay out what the whole process is, I don't even know that it's necessary, it says, can be, I think you can just say, shall be designated, we could go for it the first sentence and kill the rest, but I don't know that I...
Is the rest required by the regs?
I think what they'd be doing is restating the whole process underneath the policy guidelines.
So for example, the costs are to be borne by the applicant, is, are they stepping up to assume costs they wouldn't otherwise be required to assume?
No, I mean, right, I mean, I just think it says, they shall be designated to extent permitted by applicable law, you could stop there, because there's a whole procedure under applicable law.
Good, so let's just do that.
Okay.
Good.
And now we've got to go on to attachment C. We've gone through the 11 pages.
I'm going to add, and shall be implemented in accordance with, okay?
Yes, yes. Okay, so now we need to get to the waivers, this is some tough stuff. Waivers granted, so now, under the zoning bylaw, the multifamily dwelling use...
Wait a minute, where are they?
C, A, C1?
I know why. No, I ripped them off.
So...
Okay, C1, no, we're on A, right?
Yes.
So I, I think there was a debate, and this was still in the waiver, so I have the waiver chart from hearing discussion.
Yep.
As to which is really the waiver that they needed. They had 1.1, or was it 1.6?
They have 1.1.
But, right, and then, you know, but we questioned, was it 1.6, because...
That's townhouse, not less than four.
Not less than four or more?
More than 10.
No, than 10, oh, this is connected, because they have how many connected? Because single families are allowed in this district.
Right.
And these are, most of them, single district, but they have a few connected. Four of them are connected? So, do they really just, they need relief from the provision that says, in District B, you cannot have connected townhomes, it's prohibited in District B?
And even if it were allowed, you can't have less than four? And they're less, all of them are less than four?
There's five of them. So I think they really need the waiver from 1.6, because they're allowed to have single-family homes, and they have 11 of them.
Yep, I agree.
All right, so we'll give them a waiver from 1.6.
1.6, yep.
Okay. Then, I, we compared it, so... We putting numbers in here, but just so you know what you're, it's the subject to the condition, which is the monitoring wells.
Yep.
Right, just in case the numbers go off, so that we make sure that we're tying it to the right ones. And then, earth removal, was that condition C8? But really, I guess the question is, they don't need a waiver, right? Because you haven't granted them anything in excess of what they're allowed to do under the zoning.
Right. And, right, and they haven't demonstrated that they need that waiver.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's a remove, are you saying, remove section 5C from the waiver list? Is that what the board is?
Yes.
Yes, yep, yeah.
Again, in the, so, the street opening, subject B2, that's the highway superintendent conditions for restoration. The loan removal is that same one, the offer to DPW language?
Yep.
All right, the reason I highlighted the next two is because there's language, my, my suggestion is that, rather than have language that is, sounds like a condition...
Right.
In two different places, in the condition list and the waiver list?
Yeah.
To put it all there, but now, there's language here in these waivers, which is not in the condition section. So, I, I think, to be consistent, you may want it to be moved from here and put into the proper section of the conditions.
So, we're talking about Article 22?
Well, yeah, they're both, they're all Article 22, so section 2A, or, and section 2B.
Yes, waived only to the extent of the approved plans.
See, I don't think you need the second sentence.
We don't, right.
Yep.
So we, if we just say waived only to the extent of approved plans here, we're, it's probably okay, it's not really a condition. But then this language about re-establishing the buffer, is that in John's condition?
Yep, we, it's in there.
Any portion that is disturbed, okay, so we probably don't need that there, that's all going to be in that B, is that in that B1? Okay.
You don't, you don't want to include, just to make it clear, that this waiver is subject to the re-establishment of the buffer?
No, we're going to say, subject to condition number.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
The one thing that's not in that condition, though I don't know if you want to incorporate it in, is this "to be maintained to growing seasons," do you want to add that into that condition?
Back in the condition, that's correct, yeah. Yes.
I don't know, I screwed something up, I'm sorry.
Never. Exactly.
Okay, so, it was in Emily's draft, but in, not in what appeared in front of you tonight, so, which is what counts, I guess.
Section 5, authorization denied product, right? Yep.
Okay, so...
Waiving the surety bonds.
Right, and the disposal system, we are waiving it for the initial sale of the property to the applicant.
All right, the board of health ones, I have to say, as I was trying to go through, I wasn't entirely clear, so there's a lot highlighted.
Let's go through them. So section 4, 4, requirement to direct, to notice, direct to butters of the application for disposal works, construction permit?
That was checked, I had that as checked.
Yeah, exactly, yep. So then we're at section 410, ask requirement to plot existing sewage disposal systems on abutting properties, waive subject to, so we...
That was based on, yeah, that was based on existing information?
Right.
To make your best effort, et cetera, et cetera.
But where, where is that, though?
It's in, there's language in their addendum that allows that, and, the draft it.
So it needs to be included as our, right, okay, so, but that's going to be included in the condition, but that was...
How did I, how did I...
Yeah, but Susan just wants to make sure.
I'm sorry, there, there was some screw-up in the draft, so Emily added language in, but it's not in the draft that's in front of you, so I just want to make sure that what you're voting?
Yes.
Has the language in it? Emily, do you have your...
But Emily just made clear that it is.
Oh, here it is. It's in here somewhere? Okay, do you want to keep going, she'll find?
Yes, right, okay, so now we are... We're on to page C2. Section 411, requirement to install monitoring wells, we've just handled that.
Right.
You with us?
Yeah.
Emily, because I don't want to lose these guys as we're, so, section, we're on page C2. So we've handled that with the monitoring wells. Section 412, requirement to submit funds in excess...
Here's, here's, I'm sorry, this is, so, in 11, the reason why it's, it's not, it does that section 411, is it actually a requirement to install monitoring wells, or is it a requirement about something else, and the resolution is to...
And this is actually not the ref, that's not the appropriate spot, I think, for this reference, because that section was, that was the pre-application studies one, right?
Right, right.
Sorry, you're following?
No, I'm just, I'm just annoyed at myself at the moment.
Gives the board of health the authority to require, I'm sorry, let me get it for me. If upon reviewing the foregoing, the executive, executive health officer of the board determines that further information is needed before the application will be deemed complete, then he may require additional testing to further identify the soil, or groundwater elevation, or determine its extent, to locate, test, evaluate, groundwater... You could, there was also some discussion at an earlier hearing to, and I think the board of health have requested, you know, limit it to $10,000, because they're not sure that under Title V, they could ask for additional information, there was some dialogue about whether they could or couldn't.
But again, this is the sort of thing that will get slapped down on, I don't think we should...
Right, and if they can do it under Title V, they can do it under Title V.
Yep.
Okay, I think that that was waived.
Yes.
Okay, so 11 was the requirement for additional studies.
Correct.
So that, that's what...
So that is waived, but we have in fact required the installation monitoring wells.
But, in, cannot in connection with that...
Waiver.
Condition, waiver, right, so that's going to go someplace else.
Correct. Requirement to submit funds in excess of the initial deposit for the consultant review. I would say to the, we're not going to do it beyond what title, what they could otherwise get under Title V. Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, we're up to section, you with me? Up to section 63, requirements to locate all sewage disposal components within 200 feet of the structure it services.
I know, but I'm concerned we're going so fast, and I just want to make sure.
I think we are waiving that, given, so, Emily and Susan?
But it wasn't this condition B110? That's the language you put in that I just dropped by accident.
So, section 4, I'm sorry, 63, we are agreeing to that waiver. Is that consistent with your notes, Emily?
63. Yes, you, you had a discussion about requiring they submit the radius plan for the Eel River, showing that they're more than 175 feet from that, they did do that, it's been reviewed. I think they still had a concern that maybe at some point it could be interpreted that it is within 175 feet, because it's adjacent to Wetlands tributary, and we're leaving it in as kind of a, just in case.
So, we are leaving what in?
They, they were leaving in the waiver request, even though...
Yes.
Everybody's saying you don't need it.
Yeah, so I, but I think...
So you're going to grant it.
I think we are granting that waiver.
Yeah, we are.
Okay, and now we're at section 65, no sewage disposal system within 100 feet of a wetland.
This is the fam.
This, the, this is the, where the monitoring wells kick in, isn't this where it kicks in? Because if you look, the comments, it says...
Right.
Does EBA only consider waiving this, that they install, agreed to install monitoring wells, this is from the board of health's May 28th letter. They also wanted the financial assurance mechanism. But I think that you, my recollection is that you limited it to the monitoring wells.
Yes, yes.
And that's the B1I2 condition.
So we're waiving this one? Yes.
Right, subject to...
Subject to...
That condition.
Right, yes.
On the monitoring wells.
So that was...
As the same name be renumbered during final draft.
Okay, so we've got the 100 feet of a wetland, and also 400 feet of a public water supply.
Yeah, we're well beyond 400 feet from any public water supply.
They're like, didn't they say they were 700 feet?
Yeah.
So why do we need a waiver on this?
I don't think we need this.
It said, so we held them subject to plan update, and then waive, waive, but that was my notes, but they were going to give a plan, didn't they provide those plans, showing the radius plans?
We did, they showed, I think they have it.
Yeah, and I, I don't think it showed that they need the waiver.
Yeah, they showed like they were, I thought they were way outside of it, but...
Is this the one?
The, the board of health comments that...
I've got this one right here, June 10th plan.
500-foot radius plan, is that the one you're looking at?
Well, I've got, yeah, that's the one. And it's 850, they're 850 feet away from Eel River, they're 805, from another, the next closest section. They're like 800 feet away from what we would consider the water supply, right?
Well, no, but this is from a well, so the wells are off Scotland Road, I think the nearest one's.
Right, 400 feet of a public water supply well.
Right, correct.
Public water supply well.
Yeah.
Under the state water supply regulations, you can't do anything within 400 feet of the water supply well, except for an access road by the water company.
So, I'm confused, what, what are they looking for, for a waiver here, if it's state law, that they can't be within 400 feet?
Yeah, that's called the zone...
Where did the 400 feet go? I'm sorry, because their waiver request actually says, does not allow septic system within 175 feet of a protected water body, and then in parentheses, Eel River.
All right, so the Eel River, so that 175, they're 800 feet away from the river, at the two closest points.
So they don't need this one.
So I don't think they need it.
Yep. Not granted, because they don't need it.
What, your concern, Emily?
No, I just want to note that the board of health's last comments just said, conditional to the applicant identifying the banks and proximal tributaries of the Eel River on the plot plan.
They did.
And I think that was the, the banks and the proximate tributaries. I think they, the applicant was concerned that the wetland system could be considered tributary to the Eel River, and so they want the waiver, even though it appears that maybe they don't need it, but there's some question.
Because if the wetlands are considered part of it, then you're right, they do not meet the requirement.
Right.
Yeah, I think that they said it was...
Yeah, I think that they said it was the river, but if you had a flowing water directly going to the river, they would look at that as part of that...
Right.
Tributary, but it's just swamp that's not really penalized, that wouldn't necessarily be connected, is I think how they described it at the meeting.
Let me ask, how is this handled for non-40B applicants, who are consistently applying the reg? Do they look at the sort of wetland tributaries as part of...
I'm not sure how the Board of Health looks at them, but from what I think they said at the meeting was that they want, or from their letter here, is they wanted to see, the river itself, you can look at a USGS map and pick it out, but if there's a unmapped tributary that was a flowing channel directly going into the river, those they didn't show, and that, I think, was their concern, so, the Board of Health's concern, and I think the waiver would be requested by these guys, since they haven't gone to the trouble of trying to figure that out. So if there was a effort to figure it out, and there was a channel in the wetland, close enough, then you could have a problem when they go to, or they could have a problem at the Board of Health when they go to submit.
Mm-hmm, right.
Theoretically.
So, do we have evidence in the record, the health and safety issue about this? I don't think we have it with respect to the tributaries.
No, I don't think we do either.
I don't think there's, I mean, I look at the Board of Health's letter, I don't think that...
This doesn't even reference 46, does it?
The Board of Health wanted them to identify any other tributaries to the Eel River on the plan. The plan that they provided showed the Eel River.
Right.
But didn't necessarily meet the Board of Health's requested condition.
So, so the waiver that we're looking at is not the actual waiver we're discussing, because we're talking about 400 feet of a public water supply well, and so that's not what we're talking about.
But, right, so I think, but the Board of Health's comment is under that section.
Right, so at least, let's understand the reg that they're looking away, looking for a waiver of.
So 6.6, versus what?
6.6.
This is one that's kind of missing from their May 28th letter, too.
6.6 says, "No sewage disposal system or plant shall be constructed within 400 feet of a public water supply well or well field, as defined in Massachusetts Drinking Water Regulation 310 CMR 22.02."
Okay, then, then they don't need this waiver.
So this waiver, they don't need, because they're not within 400 feet.
Correct.
It goes on, "As defined herein, or within 250 feet of any private potable well, or 100 feet of any private non-potable well, or tributary to a surface water supply, including surface and subsurface drain, or within 175 feet of any protective water body." So it's the, within 175 feet of the protected water body that...
Okay.
Is the question mark.
I think they need it.
To the extent that protected water body includes well and resources.
Right, protected water body includes it, they definitely need it.
Yep, okay, so...
And that's the same with 7, then, because that's no leaching facility...
Right.
Shall be constructed within 100 feet of any surface or subsurface drain which discharges into a protected water body.
Though interestingly, the Board of Health says that 6, 7 is not required.
Well, they, they said they grant the waiver all the, is that one of the ones that said they grant it all the time?
Yeah.
All right, so that's, so, and are, so what did you say on 6, you're granting it?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think we've got evidence in the record that demonstrates that we should not.
Right. 8 is the 12-5 rule.
All right, so this is, uh, "No sewage disposal serving new construction or expansion of use shall be designed to discharge more than 110 gallons of design flow per day per 12,500 square feet in lot area," and we know that the Board of Health applies the rule consistently, they're not using it just to discriminate against affordable housing project, and I think they've got a lot of evidence in the record here to support the 12-5. Joe, what's your...
Yeah, I, I think they do as well, I mean, um, I came into this a little skeptical of this requirement, but after hearing the evidence that, how it is consistently applied throughout town, throughout town, not just in this area, to, to all applicants, um, I think there's solid reason.
And the, um, the additional, there was a lot of challenge by the applicant as to back, back up science and information.
Right.
So, and they had continuously supplemented that, so their last letter to the Board on June 18th...
They being the Board of Health?
Yes, the Board of Health's last memo which came, I believe, the morning of the hearing.
Yes.
They do have a number of pages of discussion on nitrogen standards with reference to various guidelines, DEP guidelines, um, and then reports that they list on Page 6, Cape Cod Commission's Nitrogen Loading Technical Bulletin, the nitrate removal for on light point system study, so, and then they have, um, they refer to other towns, such as the town of Topsfield, so, that's on kind of a sampling of the various...
Mm-hmm.
...information they cited, too, for their concerns.
What's your view, what's your view, Todd?
Well, I, I guess the, um, they have cited the evidence of how they consistently apply this, but my understanding as state law is that Title V is, I mean, the testimony you heard from their engineer was that, um, that Title V captured all the things that we were trying to capture in terms of the performance testing. So I don't, that, that was, that was my recollection. The other thing is, what is the implication of this?
The implication is they'll have, they could build only fewer units.
Okay, right.
Or they'd have to reduce some of the units from three bedrooms to two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms, reduce the bedroom count.
So reduce the number of bedrooms.
Right, it would reduce the number of bedrooms, they had said it would be a reduction in the number of units, someone had countered, I can't remember who, you could do two bedrooms instead of three bedrooms.
Right.
That affects the market price.
But this is, this is going to get right at the issue of, of rendering it uneconomic.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Correct, it's right.
So, I mean, I guess, this is kind of now jumping forward a little bit to a discussion of the basis for your voting condition, but you have, is this a local concern?
Yes.
Yeah, it is.
Um, and is it applied consistently, and does it, you know, then you get to the, does it outweigh, even if it is economic, does it outweigh? And then the question of, if the town is at 10%, does it matter whether it's uneconomic or not?
Right.
So, but I think the threshold question is, before you even look at uneconomic, do you believe that it's a regulation that has a substantive basis for the protection of public health, safety of the residents of this project, and the residents of the municipality? That's using the language out of the regulation, so start with not willy-nilly, we can, we will, because we can, because we're at 10%.
Right.
Is there some valid public health reason that's been substantiated by the Board of Health? And I think that's the first question you always have to ask, whether it's a 40B or not a 40B.
Right.
So...
Yeah, the regulation...
In terms of substantiation, how applicable are you that the information provided substantiates the, the requirement for this, under the backdrop of 40B and Title V? And I mean, I, I clearly don't under, you know, understand all of the...
Need regulations, because now my eight piles are no longer need.
...assertions as to, yeah, what's requirements.
Well, I think the Board of Health has made the case that the conditions in Hingham warrant the 12-5 requirement, which is beyond the state requirement, but all towns are not created the same in Massachusetts, and so there's no reason to think that a minimum standard applied statewide necessarily meets the requirements for health and safety of every town.
Right, and so I think they've presented a reasoned scientifically-based position
that their standard is appropriate.
Right.
A lot of effort into it?
They did, I think, I think Dr. Schultz did, and the rest of the board.
And we certainly, you know, um, it's not as if there's a flimsy record here, there's an extensive record.
Extensive record, there's some, you know, some of the reasoning that they applied as well. We're in a high-stress watershed, within the Zone 2 of a public water supply well. I said Scotland Street earlier, I meant Fulling Mill, which is the nearest one. Within a high-stress watershed, I mean, all those reasons.
Anything else, Susan, you think we should be focusing on this?
Um, you know, there are a fair number of housing appeals committees that look at this, because obviously nitrogen loading is an issue, which even the applicants, um, engineer acknowledged that nitrogen loading is an issue, so, you know, it does just get to the question of whether or not in Hingham, in this location, you feel you have the specific, not just the general concern about nitrogen loading, but you have the specific substantiation for it, and that's what you just discussed.
Right, right. I would, um, I would be inclined not to waive the, the 12-5 requirement.
Right.
Um, I think we've, we've waived a lot of the, of the Board of Health regs, but they've drawn a line in the sand here, and they've drawn it not arbitrarily, and I'm satisfied that they've made the case.
As am I.
I concur.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's not a waiver that we would grant.
Okay.
Yeah, what number was that?
That was 8, 6, 8.
That was 6, 8, now we're up to 6, 9, "Leaching facilities shall not be constructed in soils where the maximum groundwater elevation..."
Is that checked as waived on the chart?
Yes, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Um, 610, "Use of area between the leaching field trenches can be used as the reserve area per the design of the final construction plan submitted to the Board of Health as part of the Title V filing." I'm confused why this is...
Well, my notes from, were originally hold subject to cost review.
They did that, and came back and said it would be approximately $45,000, they'd be willing to pay that if...
Right.
All other...
Right, right.
Wavers were granted.
Right, which we just didn't do.
So, "Use of area between the leaching field trenches can be used as reserve area..."
Okay, I, I want to sound like an...
What I don't like is that this is now tied into their submission to a Title V filing. That shouldn't be, shouldn't be there.
Is the reason why the Board of Health didn't want to do, didn't the Board of Health not want them to use that as reserve area unless they were going to build in? So, they said, "Only if they were going to build it in now," because the idea of ripping it up, wasn't that the concern?
Right, right.
So, it would be, they can use it provided that they build it now, am I saying that right?
That's right.
Yes.
If they build it during the first phase, the initial phase of construction.
So, it would be...
So the waiver would be that they can use it provided that it's built now?
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay, good.
So the, so the actual regulation is you can't use it...
Right.
But waive subject to, okay.
The requirement that it be built.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
Okay, um, Section 612, "Construction of leaching facilities in Phil."
That was a waiver. Too much paper. That was, um, I have that as checked. Emily, do you have that?
Right.
I have 12, 22, and 10, though the next three is waived.
Yes, I agree.
With then 13 being the same, that was under the general bylaw for the initial sale of the property to the applicant only.
Yes, correct. Waived only for the initial, yes. And then...
Then they asked for the shade tree as, they wanted it to be waived as a local requirement.
And we're not waiving it because it's a state requirement.
Right, so that's not on the draft in front of you.
Yes.
And then there's the standard, if, if we haven't waived it, it's not waived language.
Yes.
You do set up a building commissioner discretion, kind of field change, diminuteness.
"Granted the foregoing waivers from local bylaws and regs, intention of this comprehensive permit to permit construction of the project shown in approved plan, if in reviewing the applicant's building permit applications, the building commissioner determines that any additional waivers from local bylaws or regs is necessary to permit construction to proceed as shown in approved plans, the building commissioner shall proceed as follows: A, any matter of a diminuteness nature shall be deemed within the scope of the waivers granted by this comprehensive permit, and be any matter not of a diminuteness nature, including what limited to potential adverse impact on health, public health, safety, welfare, or the environment, shall be reported back to the Board for expeditious disposition of the applicant's request for a waiver therfrom." That seems fine.
Well, how does it get, how does it get reported back to the Board? The building commissioner doesn't send things back to the Board?
No, the building, well, the building commissioner denies the application, and then the applicant's going to come here and denies it because it's, because it's not...
So maybe, if it's not a diminuteness nature, then maybe there's a reference back to shall be subject to the review of the Board pursuant to CMR.
No, any, any matter of, right, any matter not, it says, um, right, so it wouldn't should, it shouldn't say shall be reported back to the Board, it should be that the applicant is informed that their plans are not approved, and the applicant will determine what to do.
Yeah, so we'll, I'll revise it accordingly, because there's a couple of different places where it got revised, just to refer back to the process under the regulations.
Yes, yes. Okay, so having gone through that, we now come to the motion.
Yep, which is in front of you.
So, I would leave it to Joe or Todd to make the motion.
Oh, okay, well, I would move that, um, we vote to approve the comprehensive permit with the condition, I guess we'll just read this, "After extensive public hearings and evaluation of the testimony and documents submitted by the applicant's neighbors and town officials, zoning Board of Appeals," I don't know if we're going to, if we could say votes unanimously, because we haven't voted.
Right, you moved that the Voting Board of Appeals, uh, grant.
Vote unanimously, or grant the comprehensive permit.
Let me just stop you, so the motion is to grant, not, not, because unanimous is not required under the law.
Right.
So we, I move that we grant the comprehensive permit for the project shown on the project plans as described in attachment A, "Subject to the comprehensive permit, conditions and waivers which are attached heretofore as attachment B and attachment C respectively, and incorporated herein by reference based on the following findings: finding one, while there is a regional, a regional need for low and moderate income housing, approval of the project must be subject to certain conditions which are necessary and proper under Mass. General Law's Chapter 40B, Sections 20 through 23, which is Chapter 40B, and the regulations promulgated thereunder at 760 CMR 56.00 at SEC, because A, the conditions imposed by the Board protect the health and safety of the occupants of the project and the residents of the town, protect the natural environment, promote better site and building design in relation to the surrounding residential neighborhood, and apply the, the applicable local requirements and regulations in a manner either equal to or more liberal than they are applied to unsubsidized housing, and B, in the event the applicant alleges that one or more of the conditions render the project uneconomic, and such conditions are found by a court of final jurisdiction to be uneconomic, such conditions address local concerns and are consistent with local needs, and C, lower moderate income housing exists in the town of Hingham, which is in excess of 10% of the year-round housing units reported in the latest federal decennial census of the town, thereby meeting the standards for the statutory minima, as per... the town, thereby meeting the standards for the statutory minima as previously referenced in the Board's filings with the Housing Appeals Committee. And Special Condition 2 with respect...
Finding.
Finding, finding 2, thank you, with respect to any condition herein requiring compliance of the applicant and the project with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 21A, Section 13, Chapter 87, Sections 3 through 5, and Chapter 131, Section 40, or collectively the state acts. The state acts are general laws of the Commonwealth and not local requirements or regulations, and therefore the Board has no authority under Chapter 40B to override the requirements thereof.
Okay, the motion's been made. Before it's second, I just think the 1B needs to be clarified. It says, "In the event that the applicant alleges that one or more of the conditions..." Should say, I believe, that one or more of the conditions or waiver requests or denial of waiver requests render the project uneconomic.
Conditions or denial of waiver.
Denial of a waiver. Render the project uneconomic, and such conditions or failure to waive are found by a court of final jurisdiction uneconomic. Such conditions and waivers address local concerns that are consistent with local needs. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Such conditions and waiver denials are...
Yeah, focus on the word denials there.
Yep.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
That's right, it only has to be 2 to 1.
And that concludes this stage. Next stage, we will do a written decision. How much time do we have for that?
40 days from the 18th, July 14th. That's Steel Day, was that what we...
I believe it is, that's Steel Day.
No, 40 days from June 18th. Oh, no, July 18th. That was a different permit that that was the deadline for.
I think it's like July 30th or something.
I think it's in the big...
Okay.
We have it written down.
I think it's July 30th.
Emily, I am hoping there was no other business that we need to attend to this evening?
No.
Minutes can wait?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so with that, we are adjourned. And I want to thank the members of the public for having persisted with us and for input and for really persevering through this. It was...
I was trying to... That's why... That's why you...
We'll see where we go from here.
As long as we talked about it.
Good work, Mr. Chair.